At this time, I would like to reconvene the City Council Public Finance Authority Meeting and call to order special meetings of the Housing Authority Investment Advisory Board. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Here.
Councilmember Mosher.
Here.
Mayor Protem van der Mark.
Here.
Mayor Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to have Councilmember Mosher lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All who can, please stand. Ready, begin.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll have Mike Mashad of Dance for Joy Ministries and member of the Greater Huntington Beach Interfaith Council, lead us in our invocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, in our hearts tonight, we planned our agenda, but we pray that you establish our steps. I pray that the Huntington Beach government officials in this meeting tonight seek you for advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act upon your wisdom. Please guide each one of us, Lord. We place tonight's meeting in your hands. We placed our hearts and our minds in your hands so that we may be directed tonight. In your name we say, amen.
Now I'd like for all of us to take a moment of silence in memory of Ally West, who's a freshman at Huntington Beach High School that tragically passed away this last week. So, let's do a moment of silence. Closed session report by City Attorney. City Attorney Michael Gates, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
I would like to announce items on the Agenda Number 15, 28, 29, and 31 have been removed for consideration from tonight's agenda. Announcements of supplemental communications. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do. For consent, Item 11, 13 emails received regarding Ordinance Number 4276, amending Chapter 2.07 of the Huntington Beach Municipal Code relating to campaign reform. Consent Item 12, 11 emails received regarding Ordinance 4277, amending Chapter 1.18 of the Huntington Beach Municipal Code relating to anonymous complaints. For administratum, Items Number 25, a memorandum to City Council submitted by Chris Lama, our Director of Community and Library Services, regarding corrections to the RDG Planning and Design, Inc. amendment. For ordinances for introduction, Item Number 27, a memorandum from myself regarding a correction to Ordinance Number 4275, specifically the legislative draft. Councilmember Items Number 30, a letter from Peter S. Levi, Regional Director of the Anti-Defamation League, ADL, received regarding the request to prepare an ordinance limiting flag displays at city facilities. Letter from Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke, Director of Advocacy and Education at the LGBTQ Center OC, received regarding the request to prepare an ordinance limiting flag displays at city facilities. 275 email communications received regarding the request to prepare an ordinance limiting flag displays at city facilities. For Item 31, which is polled, we received seven email communications regarding SV9 and SV10 impacts on Huntington Beach. For Item Number 32, 28 email communications received regarding the request to reinstate remote citizen participation at public meetings. For Item 33, two email communications regarding the request to review group home regulations in the city. And for Item 34, two email communications regarding the request to commence a Development Impacts Fund, DIF, study. That's it.
Thank you. Public comments. So, at this time, the City Council will receive comments from the members of the public regarding any topic, including items of the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filing out a request-to-speak form delivered by the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes. At this time, we have 49 people signed up to speak. I'm going to call the first group of 10. Please approach both podiums so we can move through this smoothly. Kelly Jones, representing Senator Dave Min's office. Susan Neal. Robin Estanislav, myself. Armin Bagdazarian. Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke. Dolly Bookler. Jocelyn Rabbit Sire. Avery Counts. Margaret Robinson. Andrew Einhorn.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and Councilmembers. Thank you for your attention. My name is Susan Neal. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. There are only two items on the agenda today that I'm going to speak to, though there are several that concern me. I have a feeling other people will address most of them. First, I want to say that Councilmember Mosher makes a very cogent argument for making council meetings Zoomable again. I've certainly appreciated that opportunity when I couldn't get here in person, and I urge you to support her. But the thing that I most want to plead you to reconsider is your proposal to ban anonymous complaints against businesses for code violations. The proposed ban states that it only applies to complaints regarding businesses located within the city's commercial, mixed-use, or industrial zones, and does not apply to residential zones. Sounds good, right? A look at the city zoning map puts the problem with this in bold relief. There are hundreds of locations in Huntington Beach where a commercial zone backs up immediately to residential property. I happen to live in one of those. The routine code violations practiced by the restaurant on the other side of a cinder block wall behind my house leave our yards, and that of my neighbors, invaded by rats, and the air around and even in our homes reeking of garbage. When I ask why no one in our neighborhood had reported the problem, I was told they were afraid of repercussions. Okay? I was scared too, but I submitted a report, complete with pictures, and the problem was addressed. Da-dum. That's how government is supposed to work. Citizens identify a problem in the community, thus saving you the labor of having to go out and monitor all of that, and it gets addressed. Please don't kill the messengers that are helping to keep this city clean by requiring us to identify ourselves. I think in most cases, even I wouldn't have done that. Thank you.
Mayor Strickland, Councilmembers, valued members of our community, my name is Kelly Jones. I'm here on behalf of State Senator Dave Min, and I'd like to read a statement prepared on the topic of the LGBTQ pride flag. The pride flag is such an important symbol of inclusion and diversity and of celebrating our lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender friends and neighbors. At a time when hate and discrimination against LGBT community and other marginalized groups is at alarming levels, including in Surf City, it is more important than ever that our elected leaders make clear that all are welcome and cherished. Voting to end the flying of the pride flag during Pride Month would send the wrong message, a message of intolerance and division to the many residents of Huntington Beach and to the millions of tourists who come to Surf City each year. I urge the city of Huntington Beach to rise to this occasion and boldly affirm its commitment to equality and diversity where everyone feels safe, appreciated, and valued. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and City Council. As your City Clerk, I would like to express my support for Councilmember Item Number 32, a request to reinstate remote citizen participation at public meetings. The city's implementation of Zoom during the COVID-19 pandemic allowed members of the public to view and participate in public meetings and was instrumental in keeping our community connected and informed of city business. This action was especially welcomed by citizens who experienced physical transportation or childcare restrictions and the like that would otherwise keep them from attending and sharing their voice in person. Physical, transportation, childcare, and other restrictions will continue to prohibit in-person attendance at public meetings for some, and with Zoom coming at such a minimal cost to the city, I believe that the benefits of offering it for increased public participation far outweigh the drawbacks. Please consider reinstatement of remote participation at public meetings to promote participation and inclusivity for those members of our community unable to attend meetings in person. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Einhorn, long-term resident of Huntington Beach. The title of my topic is Hate is a Clear and Present Danger. In a rapidly changing world, hate, bigotry, bullying have no place in a civilized society. In Charlottesville, neo-Nazi marchers were chanting hateful slogans such as "Jews will not replace us." After this event, a politician actually stated, and I quote, "There are good people on both sides," unquote. This is unacceptable comment and an insult to targeted people. I would hope that no one on this City Council would agree with this politician's statement. The Holocaust serves as a reminder of the consequences of hate, how easily it could be spread out of control. It starts with lies, not different than most internet posts. This leads to stigmatization, leading to the systematic slaughter of 6 million Jews. I would hope that no one on this council would deny that the Holocaust happened. So what can we do about this? Well, I hope that hate bigotry against blacks, browns, LGBTQ, and Jews and whites goes away in our society. However, if prejudice continues, I would suggest the following to racists that are planning on being reincarnated, and I hope they return as black people, brown people, or Jews, or a member of the LGBTQ community, and experience how hate feels. True leadership means you call out those who preach hate versus sitting back and allowing others to spread lies within this building. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland, Councilmembers, and staff. My name is Jocelyn Rabbit Sire. I've been living in Huntington Beach for 23 years. I would like to briefly address a few issues, most of which are on tonight's agenda. First, I would like to ask you to please vote no on Item Number 11 concerning campaign contribution limits. Increasing the limit to 5,500 makes the race more about who you know and far less about what a candidate can do for the community. Next, in the spirit of inclusivity and respect for all community members, I would request that our city vote no on Item Number 30 and keep the pride flag flying at City Hall during Pride Month. Also, in that same spirit of inclusivity, I am in support of Item Number 32 concerning the ability to call into City Council meetings. Now that we have this tool for enhanced participation by the community, it makes no sense to me to close that door and diminish folks' ability to be heard. Please reinstate that channel of communication. Also, and finally, please also halt any consideration of dropping out of our partnership with OCPA. Huntington Beach residents deserve choice in their energy consumption, and OCPA is the best source for filling that need in Orange County. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Margaret Robinson. I'm a condo owner in Huntington Beach. So you want to avoid actions that could be perceived as divisive. I don't think that's going too well for you this evening. You feel that no members of our community ought to be treated differently or discriminated against. This is another major fail on your part on two fronts. Your decision to end remote citizen participation discriminates against community members who have a physical disability that makes it impossible for them to attend the City Council in person. Your decision denies them their right to express their opinions and participate in meetings. Your ending their access may even be a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act. But then again, what's another lawsuit in Huntington Beach? Your Agenda Item 30 does discriminate against the LGBTQ community. You will be removing the pride flag, yet leaving another nonofficial flag to fly, and no, I do not want the POW flag removed. When the flying of the pride flag was adopted in 2021, it was a symbol of inclusion and acceptance to me and other members of the LGBTQ community. The message you are now sending is one of exclusion and nonrecognition. You will make the old, tired, unproven argument that everyone will want a flag rather than establishing an egalitarian policy on matters like this. I am a realist. I know that this will pass four to three. But my positive take on this whole debacle is that we now see who you are and how you intend to govern. I personally do not think that transparency and fairness will be cornerstones of your city administration. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the Huntington Beach City Council. My name is Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke, and I'm the Director of Advocacy and Education at the LGBTQ Center OC. We're a longstanding organization that serves the LGBTQ people here in Orange County. For nearly 50 years, our organization has responded to the changing and growing needs of the Orange County LGBTQ community, providing culturally competent and affirming health and wellness services. The LGBTQ Center OC is disappointed with the recent decision by several Huntington Beach City Council members to remove its pride flag from display during LGBTQ Pride Month in June. Pride Month is a time for members of the LGBTQ community and allies to come together to celebrate achievements, raise awareness about ongoing challenges and discrimination, and promote equality and acceptance. The removal of the pride flag sends an unwelcoming message that Huntington Beach does not support or accept its LGBTQ residents, which is unacceptable. As community leaders, it is your responsibility to ensure that all residents feel welcomed and valued regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. We strongly are encouraging you all to keep flying the pride flag. The solution should not be to remove the pride flag, but rather to engage in respectful dialogue and education about its meaning and importance. It is through open and honest conversations that we can work together in creating a more inclusive community. The pride flag is a small but powerful symbol of hope and inclusion, and it deserves to be displayed proudly in Huntington Beach and in other cities across Orange County. We hope that you will reconsider your decision and work towards finding a solution that promotes unity and acceptance for all members of our community. Please don't hesitate to reach out to our organization for more support or guidance. As you can see here, there's a lot of supporters, a lot of community members that I would encourage you all to reach out to and talk to and have conversation. Thank you.
My name is Dolly Buhr. I am the Programs Assistant at the LGBTQ Center in Orange County. I'm here today in opposition for the proposal to not fly the pride flag this June. By going back on the decision to fly the pride flag, the city of Huntington Beach is taking a huge step back, and you're sending a message to your queer constituents that our existence and experience doesn't matter. To the members of the queer community, flying the flag is so much more than a ceremonial gesture. It sends the message that we deserve to live lives free from hate and harassment and treated with respect. I ask that you continue to fly the pride flag this June and every June thereafter to show that this is a city that cares for all of its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Council. Good evening, Huntington Beach. My name is Avery Counts, and I am proud to live in my hometown of Huntington Beach. And tonight, I'd like to talk to you all about the Huntington Beach that I love. The Huntington Beach that I love sticks together. We help our neighbors. We welcome people and make them feel at home because they are. We water their plants when they go out of town, and we throw an extra burger on the grill for them on the Fourth of July. The Huntington Beach that I love is for everyone. As LGBTQ+ people come under attack across the nation via discriminatory and hateful laws, we have an opportunity to make sure that they know that they are welcome and safe in Huntington Beach. The pride flag lets them know that this is their beach too, and that they are valued and important neighbors. Fly the pride flag and send the message that Huntington Beach is here to accept all. Regardless of how the Council votes tonight, to all the LGBTQ+ members in Huntington Beach, both young and old, you are welcome here. You are loved here. You are valuable and important and an irreplaceable part of our city. And to those that choose to harbor hatred in their hearts, I say that your descendants will spread love and acceptance. Huntington Beach is for all. Fly the pride flag. Thank you, and good night.
My name is Armin Bagdazarian. I'm told the City Council wants to eliminate sidewalk dining on Main Street. The current hodgepodge could use regulation, but the end result has been positive. On pleasant days, one can listen to a musician or stroll down the street. Other cities, Long Beach, San Pedro Hermosa Beach, to name a few, have outside dining, and there doesn't seem to be any problems. The local restaurants need all the help they can get. They're competing with Pacific City, and I know there are more people downtown at these dining areas just because it's outside. My wife and I have met many people from out of town at these restaurants. They are here because of the ambiance and fresh air. Huntington Beach is a destination, and replacing all this with cars is taking a step backwards. We will lose people who find downtown attractive. Replacing parking meters and having your conversation interrupted as a motorcycle roars by is pitiful. roars by is pitiful. Vintage cars used to parade, and they're fun to look at, but they're exempt from smog rules. If anyone doesn't believe that, just go to the O'Corney of Magnolia and Adams. And yeah, during the cars, when the early cars are there, and your eyes will water, and it stinks. Parking meters for a few dollars in revenue? Parking this truck just across in the arcade, just a few steps away, you have an elevator to take you through the arcade, and you're right there. Free parking, 90 minutes? What could be easier? We would be taking a step backwards to implement this. I urge you to reconsider this poorly thought-out action. Take a consensus. Make sure that this is what people want. I want it very much so. All my friends, people I've spoken to, they say the same thing. And we should live by what the majority wants. That's it. Thank you.
I'll call the next 10 speakers. Kathy Ryder, Stephen Quinn, Shirley Detloff, Connie Boardman, Arthur Estrada, Alex Mohajer -- I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong -- Karen Jackal, Kathy Carrick, Aileen Taber Capici, Dave Migliore.
My name's Stephen Quinn, longtime citizen of Huntington Beach, wish to express my wholehearted support for Councilman Burns' proposal to do away with flags and other symbols which express ideologically divisive values. It's not the place of government at any level to pick favorites among groups, whether by race, gender preference, or religious beliefs. We stand today at a crossroads, a time when the nation has not been so fragmented into seemingly irreconcilable factions since the Civil War. Do we really want our city government to engage in actions which can only increase the enmity among various groups? Flags flying outside City Hall should tend to unite us, not divide us. There is no NRA flag, no Israeli flag, no Christian flag outside of City Hall. Similarly, there should be no flags endorsing or celebrating any particular race, creed, or gender preference. To compel people to genuflect before values that are not their own isn't equity, it's tyranny.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and members of the city council. My name is Shirley Detloff, and I've lived in Huntington Beach since 1964. I'm here tonight to express my concerns for the issues regarding the flying of flags at city-owned facilities. As one of the authors of the Human Dignity Statement, I feel that if a flag recognizes the values of our city, then it should be allowed to fly when it is appropriate. The flag I'm referring to is the LGBTQ flag, which only flies during the month of June and when the work of this organization is being recognized across the nation. The Human Dignity Statement says that everyone in our city, regardless of their religion, racial background, nation of origin, sexual or disability status, and sexual orientation, will be treated with respect and courtesy. Every council has supported this statement since it was written in 1996. I believe that the LGBTQ flag is the flag that is being discussed tonight, and to my knowledge is the only flag which is not related to the city, county, and state and federal government which has flown over city facilities. The LGBTQ documents describe their activities which appear to reflect our values. They use the words inclusion, racial justice, leadership, importance of community, integrity, diversity, and excellence. These are the same words we use in describing how we treat our residents. The city determined in 2022 that those organizations who share our values should be allowed to fly their flag at city-owned properties if the rules that the council approved are followed, so that we already have a criteria that the council, who must decide which flag can fly, must follow. Commemorative flags must be flown for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject that is to be commemorated, but no longer than 45 continuous days. They must be positioned subordinate to all standard flies currently flown in the city, must follow federal and state protocols. The rules and others must be stated. The city council has final say which groups will be allowed this privilege. I'm also concerned that making this move, the council will be seen as supportive -- not supportive -- of all of our criteria which allows the flag to be flown. One of the things I am most concerned about is what this is going to do to our city. We are a city that would like to see the Olympics come to Huntington Beach because of our surfing, but the Olympics use the same values as this city says that we have, and if we take those values away by discriminating against those who live in our city, then they will probably not come to Huntington Beach. Also, businesses in this community may be impacted, because no corporation has come to a city that shows that they may not be welcoming to all of the guests that they have invited to whatever kind of business meeting they may have. So I say to you, do what is right, let the flag fly, and remember, we do have rules. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Strickland. My name is Connie Boardman. I served on the Huntington Beach City Council for eight years, and I was mayor twice. My experience in those positions has me concerned about several agenda items this evening, but I'll focus on item 30. This item changes the current flag policy and prevents the council from voting to fly any kind of commemorative flag at a city facility. I don't remember a time when a council member brought an item that changes a policy to prevent the council from voting in public on an issue. The four of you ran on transparency. What's more transparent than taking a vote at a council meeting that's livestreamed and televised? The current policy already addresses flying the MIA POW flag, American flag, city flag, state flag, and requires a vote of the city council before flying any kind of commemorative flag, including the gay pride flag. Mr. Burns' agenda item removes the council's ability to authorize flying commemorative flags or any other flag other than the ones he has listed in his agenda item. It would eliminate, for example, the flying of the gay pride flag in June, as the city did last year. This is a small gesture that recognizes the value of our residents and visitors who belong to the LGBTQ+ community, a gesture that shows the city sees them and values them. It's a small gesture, but it's compassionate to recognize a community of people who've been historically discriminated against and marginalized. Under the current policy, the council would need to vote this year to again approve flying the gay pride flag during Pride Month, but this item removes the chance of council members maybe having to take an unpopular vote, say, voting against flying the gay pride flag and being seen as homophobic. Mr. Burns states in his item that the city in the past has only flown the American flag, MIA POW flag, state, city, and occasionally the county flag, and that was it. That's inaccurate. I can give you an example based on the surfboard that's behind the mayor right now on the wall. That surfboard was donated by the Donate Life Group one April as part of a ceremony down at the pier where, for the month of April, we flew the Donate Life flag in honor of raising awareness to organ donation. The item would also prevent the city from flying the flags associated with our sister city in Anjo, Japan, when the residents from Anjo visit. Anjo's been our sister city for over 40 years, and we have commonly flown the sister city flag, the Anjo flag, the flag of Japan, when the adult delegation visits, which often includes the mayor of Anjo as well as council members. I'm sure you'd like to have the 2028 Olympics Surfing Event here in town. This agenda would prevent the city from flying the Olympic flag at the pier. If you're thinking, oh, well, we could make an exception for that, you don't need to make an exception, just keep the current policy. If you look at LA28, the website of those organizing the LA Olympics, they stress diversity and inclusion. This agenda item is the opposite of that. Please vote no on item 30.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and staff. My name's Arthur Estrada, and I'm speaking tonight on item 32, the effort to reinstate remote citizen participation in public meetings and city council and committees and boards. It's important to continue Zoom meetings for those residents who do not have access to Channel 3 to view proceedings. It is critical that there be an additional way to watch and take part in meetings through public speeches. Frequently, the council chamber is filled to capacity. Citizens may be unable or unwilling to drive at nighttime meetings, to see nighttime meetings, but want to express their civic involvement. Their health may be compromised, so they cannot be present in large groups of people. Some hard-of-hearing people are better able to hear the proceedings on Zoom. Furthermore, over the past two and a half years, citizens have become comfortable using modern technology to take part in important civic activities. It appears having remote citizen participation is a measure of accessibility that is required of all public meetings. I sincerely hope you will vote to reinstate remote citizen participation. Thank you.
I'm Karen Jakel, a director of Huntington Beach Reads One Book. A citywide one-read is done nationwide in many cities, Huntington Beach being one of them. Our book is called Still Sideways, and it is about a young man who loses most of his sight, and he was quite an athlete, and he figures out what to do so that he can still ski, skateboard, and do all kinds of sports safely in spite of his visual impacts. Huntington Beach Reads One Book will have this gentleman, the author, here on March 9th. There is a free evening with the author at the Central Library Theater and book signing following. You can purchase the books at Barnes &amp; Noble, and there are also copies at our library, and it's well worth reading. It is also made available to all seven high schools, and they each have a set of books for the kids to read, and we have events that are for younger children as well. There are going to be two craft storytimes, one on February 17th at Oakview and one on February 21st at the Central Library. And we also have a fundraiser, because we're a nonprofit, and unfortunately, it takes money to buy all those books. So our fundraiser is the same night on March 9th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and the author will be there, and there'll be hors d'oeuvres. So please consider coming to both events and supporting Huntington Beach Reads One Book. Thank you.
Mayor Protem -- I'm sorry, Mayor Protem and council members, my name is Aileen Taber Capici. I am a resident of Huntington Beach, and I'm going to address item number 30. I think there should be no question, and clearly there's no question by all the people that are here, that this proposal is intended as a mean-spirited divisive action at marginalizing members of our community solely because of their sexual orientation. Flags are important symbols of community membership, of unity and visibility, and every person in our community deserves to be visible, to be treated with respect, and welcomed as an equal and valuable member of society. And the flying of the pride flag shows that our community is inclusive, and we are welcoming to all persons. Civilized, modern society does not have space for bigotry, hate, and discrimination to grow. The community here and the 11 million people who annually come to our city are wondering, what are you going to do? What are you going to vote for? Are you going to vote so that this city is inclusive and welcoming to all? Or are you going to vote that you agree with intolerance and hate? And I ask you to vote on the side of inclusiveness and welcoming. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff, and my fellow HP residents. I'm Kathy Ryder, and I have lived and voted in Huntington since 1985. The newly-elected council members told us that they were fiscally conservatives, who would stop unnecessary spending and watch over our city budget carefully. Then why are you proposing agenda item 12? A letter from the ACLU has made it very clear that passing that ordinance would invite a lawsuit, so I'm urging you to vote no on agenda item 12. In fact, the most recent supplemental communication from the ACLU specifically refutes remarks that were made by our own city attorney at a previous meeting. Do we really want to use our tax dollars and our city attorney's time on a lawsuit from the ACLU? Is this an example of being fiscally conservative and watching our funds carefully? We have much more important issues that need to be addressed, and according to you, solving homelessness should be one of our top priorities. Those recently elected promised that on the day one, they would implement some plan, 90-day plan for homelessness. Well, hello, today is day 63, and there is still no noticeable homeless plan. And in fact, we had been promised that there would be a study session that I don't see scheduled anytime in the future. So just really, what are your priorities? Is it just filing lawsuits? Another concern is that at December 20th city council meeting, the mayor announced that city council comments on boards, task force, and commissions would be written and included in the minutes. Has that policy changed? If you serve on multiple boards, task force, and commissions, how in just three minutes would any council member be able to adequately not only give a report, but share their perspective about what they have learned? And lastly, I fully support the agenda item 32. We have many residents who are not able to physically attend our city council meetings for a wide variety of reasons. As a matter of fact, I think the average age of citizens in Huntington Beach is somewhere in the 60s. A lot of them don't drive at night. This edict from the podium to ban public participation via the use of readily-available, certainly very affordable, technology seems to me to be an attempt to just silence voters. Shame on you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alex Mohajer. I am the president of the Stonewall Democratic Club, and I am not -- I'm not here to give a political speech. I'm here to look you all in the eyes and ask you to please not do this. Please don't divide this community this way. And let me tell you about the shoulders that I stand on tonight, just to be able to stand here tonight and tell you I'm a gay man. I stand on the shoulders of a long lineage of beautiful people, activists and citizens just like me, who fought and struggled and died for generations, for generations, so that I could have the privilege here in the United States to stand before you and say I'm a gay man. Edith Windsor, Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Larry Kramer. These names might not mean anything to you, but they do to me, and they do to my community. And that rainbow flag, it represents something to a community that has had to fight and struggle for every bit of recognition and rights under the law. It celebrates what makes us different. It says there's a place for you here. I also stand on the shoulders of the POWs and the MIAs and the American veterans in this country who fought and struggled and died, so that I could stand before you here tonight as a gay man in the United States of America. Please do not divide this community this way. It is a simple, small gesture of love, and if you don't take my word for it, look at those beautiful children up there. They know better than any of us do, and perhaps this is a failing on my part. Maybe we haven't done enough to sit down with one another and share our stories and show each other that we bleed the same way, that we love the same way. We've got parents just like you, brothers and sisters just like you. Maybe we haven't done enough, and for that, I regret it. And I would love the opportunity to take you all out to a coffee and take you to maybe a drag show if you haven't been to one. It's really not that scary, but don't do this. It's a simple, small -- it's a simple -- yeah, sure. It's a simple, small gesture of love, and I know that we are And I know that we are afraid of that which we do not understand, and maybe I failed those people as well, and maybe I should sit down with them and share my stories with them. But for the city of Huntington Beach to do this would cause a lot of pain to a lot of people. We are everywhere. We are here. We're in every corner of this community and elsewhere. And please don't take the pride flag down. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kathy Carrick. November ninth, twenty twenty-two, was a great day for Huntington Beach. It was so good to wake up to new hope that there were solid possibilities for new directions and new plans for our city, and the new council did not disappoint. They have already, in just two short months, addressed many of the issues they campaigned on. I never thought I'd live to see the day that we could refer to honest politicians, but friends, this crew is keeping their promises. I have, I have to specifically note Mayor Protam Van der Mark's comments at the last meeting when she so perfectly pointed out there is ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of our population whose rights are being trampled on while we carefully tend to the needs of the homeless. I care about the homeless and want them to get help, but as Mayor Strickland asked, whose responsibility is it to provide for the homeless? After many moments of stunned silence by the people reporting to us on the homeless that evening, I believe it was Ms. Mosier that finally stated it's the county's responsibility. Doesn't that kind of make you want to go, what, what are we doing? Also, regarding the flag issue, Huntington Beach is inclusive. The notion that we need a flag to say that is absurd. So I respectfully urge a yes vote on item thirty. The final thing I'd like to mention tonight is kind of a hidden benefit of the new council that I did not anticipate. Many of us in Huntington Beach are very pleasantly surprised to see how effectively, how efficiently these council meetings are now being conducted. A friend of mine, who is very well-known and respected in this town, said to me recently, and I couldn't agree more, Tony Strickland runs a tight ship. I like him. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Martin, and please excuse my shaky voice, I just ran to get in here. I grew up on one-six-seven-one-two St. Brook Lane, and I had a really, really hard time in my childhood. I had, and through the process of going to Marine View Middle School and Marina High School, graduating just barely, I had received at least six death threats my entire life during that time because I was gay. And people used the F slur at me like it was just easy to throw out. It was very, very hard to grow up here, and it's why I eventually had to move away. But when I heard about this ordinance that was being debated tonight, I did everything I could to get here. It's hard for me because I live with chronic leukemia, and I don't drive anymore, and I have to thank my wonderful friends who brought me here so that I could tell you how much the rainbow means to me. If you've ever had the privilege of surfing on Huntington Beach's waves and sitting out in the water and looking out onto the land, one of the most amazing, most awe-striving things I ever saw was when I was going to Corky Carol's Surf School, and I looked back onto the land, and I saw the providence of a rainbow looking onto the land. It was the most beautiful, serene things I've ever seen. So when I see that rainbow flying on flagpoles in cities where you probably wouldn't expect it, it is a little token, a measure of love and acceptance that little kids can look forward to, that they could be in a safe place. And it's very hard to come here and talk about these things because my past was so, so frightening for myself. I'm the elected at-large member of the Stonewall Democratic Club, and I am here with all of my friends to talk about how important this flag is, and what we cannot surrender is the story about what that rainbow means. It is a symbol of peace to so many cultures, more than just gay people around the world. It is a beautiful symbol of hope and intuition and magic and majesty, and it's why we cannot surrender the peace of that story to chaos by taking rainbows out of the sky. Please vote this measure down. Please keep the symbol alive and well in Orange County where it was so hard to fight for and so long ago. I'll end with this. I don't have any problems with conservatives or with people who don't think like me. I grew up with them. Most of my family is conservative. And if you cannot vote it, if you can't vote no, please vote present. Do not let this win. Please do not let them take the story of this rainbow and what it means. Gilbert Baker made this flag with such love and such kindness, and it is an international symbol of hope. Please, please keep that story alive for the generations to come.
My name is Zakia Wright. I'm a commissioner in the city of West Hollywood, speaking in my individual capacity in opposition of item number thirty. As a queer black person, I can only think that we should be past debating basic points like flying a flag. Huntington Beach should be an inclusive, welcoming city. The pride flag is a symbol to the LGBTQ community that we are welcome here. It's a symbol to everyone that Huntington Beach doesn't condone hate. This is such a small gesture of affirmation, but a huge step in the right direction. There are LGBTQ people, including children, being killed and killing themselves because they feel alone, unsupported, and hated because of who they are. Isn't it worth it to tell these people that Huntington Beach sees you and you're welcomed here? There are bigger problems that we should all be tackling together. Raising a piece of cloth four out of forty-eight weeks in a year is the baseline. It's the most minimum thing that we could do to recognize the LGBTQ people and their contributions. It's the starting point, and Huntington Beach crossed that line last year by flying the flag. Don't go backwards. The staff report says that all are equally valued members of our community, and none are to be treated differently or discriminated against. The fact is, LGBTQ people are treated differently, and many LGBTQ people are discriminated against. I'm a labor and employment attorney, and this is what I do every day. It happens, it's prevalent, and it's not stopping. To ignore this reality, it's harmful and it's hurtful. The purpose of government, especially local government, is to care for the community. Caring for the community isn't preferential treatment, it's trying to right the wrongs for folks that experience discrimination on a daily basis. It's subtly saying, we see you and we got you. Showing support for LGBTQ people, it's not an affront to heterosexual people to say that you can't or that you won't support LGBTQ people because non-LGBTQ people feel left out. It's ignorant, and it's tone-deaf to the moment that we're in. The hate and vitriol towards LGBTQ people, it's palpable, and heterosexual people don't have that experience of being hated for an immutable characteristic and their identity. To achieve real equity, these facts must be accepted, internalized, and remedied. Your city's website says that at the city, at the city of Huntington Beach, we strive to meet the highest standard when it comes to establishing diversity, equity, and inclusion within our community. So I ask you, what's your vision of what this means? Do the diverse community members feel that this community is diverse? Do the ordinance reflect the fairness and justice, AKA equity? And who are you including in governance? The answer to these questions, answering these questions, listening to the community, the decision becomes easy on what you should do with your vote. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the next ten. I'm going to recall Dave Migliore, Ben Fiala, Cooper Carrasco, Kathleen Johnson, Lena Osborne, Jean Ferens, Libby, Ashley Williamson, Rich Bowman, Maureen, and Rowan Wyndham Burke.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ben Fiala. I'm a resident of a senior mobile home community for almost eighteen years here in Huntington Beach. Sadly, the city of Huntington Beach does not have a rent stabilization program like many other communities in the state and other counties. I respectfully ask the city council to join the other hundreds of mobile home residents that enjoy some rent stabilization in their communities. I cannot understand why the city council will not adopt a rent stabilization program for mobile home residents and allow our rent to get jacked up as they see fit, month after month, year after year, until we're basically going to be priced out onto the street. We're going to wind up being homeless, as you probably well know. On last year, on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, I received a rental increase, a ninety-day notice that my new rent is going to be sixteen hundred and forty-five dollars, sixteen hundred and forty-eight dollars, beginning January first. But it also stated that they are going to give me a two-hundred-and-seven-dollar legacy credit because I've been here so long, which makes my base rent one thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars. So on December twenty-sixth, I paid the fourteen forty-one to start off the January year. And then I got another notice in the mail that if I don't sign a lease for sixteen hundred and forty-eight dollars for the next twelve months, I'm going to be placed on month to month. So on January twenty-fifth, I went into the office, and I paid the fourteen forty-one, and I wanted to see the new lease. The new lease specifically says that it's a twelve-month lease, even though there's only ten months left in it, and the new lease is sixteen hundred and forty-eight dollars. And I said, how could it be sixteen forty-eight? I have here a letter that says I'm going to get a legacy credit, and it has no expiration date on that legacy credit at all. So consequently, they did accept my check for fourteen forty-one. I got a receipt. Now I'm waiting till March, but the threatening letter said that if we do not sign by February first, a twelve-month lease at one thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars, we're going to be placed on month to month, which means they can raise my rent every three months, and with ninety days, they can evict me. So I respectfully ask the council to check into some kind of rent stabilization program for our seniors. I'm eighty years old, I'm in poor health, I will be homeless. So if that's the program and you want to eliminate homeless, you need to address this rent stabilization program and help us pay [bleep] fair rent.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, could we get you to fill out a blue card so that someone can get you some more information on a new program we have? Thank you.
Please. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Kathleen Johnson. I'm a resident and homeowner in Huntington Beach, and I wanted to just talk about two issues. First is the flag issue, and I just wanted to let you know, after hearing from many of the LGBT community, and passionately and personally, they're pleased to you, I want you to know as a heterosexual, I support them as well. It's not just the LGBT community asking you for this, okay? It is also heterosexuals that are not LGBT, but that support them, support them, that are tolerant and want inclusion, and I want a little bit of a city that is inclusive and tolerant. This is twenty twenty-three. We have to love our neighbors and be tolerant, and it's not just LGBT community, excuse me, it is the heterosexual community also that supports flying their flag in June. That's one issue. My other issue is, speaking of homelessness, right? So that was something that the council said they were going to do, we're going to address homelessness. I'm just going to tell you a quick story of how you guys are not addressing homelessness, and maybe you can take this as a way to fix something like that. A couple of months ago, I live in a community on Gothard and Garfield near that area, not in downtown. I was cleaning out my garage one day in a nice neighborhood, and cleaning out my garage, the garage door opened, and a person just walked into my garage. It was a, it was a homeless person. I felt very bad for this person. She was about twenty-seven years old. She was obviously homeless, but had some problems. So I wasn't sure what to do, so I gave her water, and I gave her food, and I tried to talk to her, but she was either having mental problems or on drugs, or something was wrong. But I felt very bad for her. She had no bags, she had nothing with her, she couldn't tell me where she was from. I didn't know what to do. I couldn't just say, go away. I had to do something. So I couldn't think of what to do, so I finally said, oh my gosh, our new homeless shelter that we spent so much money on, this big giant thing on Beach Boulevard, I'll take her there, because I don't know what else to do. So I drove her there. I was met by a police officer that I guess is in charge of the intake, which I couldn't go into the facility, there's all gates there, and I spoke to him, and I said, this woman just walked into my garage in Huntington Beach. Can you please take her into, take her in there and process her and help her out? He said to her, where are you from? She didn't know where she was from. After a while, he said, where'd you go to high school? And she said Belle. That's another town somewhere, I don't know where that is. He said, nope, can't come in. You're not from Huntington Beach, you can't come in this facility. And I said, what are you talking about? She was in Huntington Beach. No, I said, she's not from Belle, she went to high school in Belle. So anyway, basically what he says, she can't come in, and I said, well, what were we supposed to do? He goes, there's a bus stop right there, she can go back to Belle. And so he said, go, go on Beach Boulevard, go, make a right, and that's what he did. I gave her money for the bus, but it's not working. Please do something to address this. Excuse, excuse me, ma'am, ma'am, would you mind filling out a blue card as well? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here mostly on a personal note today, but you have the shirt on, so, but I'm just mostly speaking for myself on item thirty-two. I don't like divisiveness, but we can't hide from something just because it's controversial. Any flag could be considered divisive, any of the official flags. That's a bad reason to prohibit the flag, commemorative flags, I don't think that's a good reason. If you have a, like a problem with a particular flag, you should just vote on that particular flag, as Connie Boardman pointed out, that was a good point. But don't change the policy because it's obviously a thinly-veiled attack on the rainbow flag, and that's not just mean, it goes against like all the other flags, what they're supposed to represent, which is freedom. So, oh, I got the item wrong, but please vote no on Agenda Item Thirty. But thirty-two also, I want to support that one. So please vote yes on thirty-two because the Zoom calls are great. A lot of people, you know, it's hard to come out here, or, you know, it's a weeknight. So, I don't know, I really support that, too. That's pretty much all I got, so.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and esteemed citizens of Huntington Beach. My name is Jean Ferens, and I'm speaking tonight on item number eleven of the agenda, the amendment introduced by Mayor Strickland to increase spending limits for campaign contributions to the same amount as California state and assembly candidates, which is fifty-five hundred dollars. If this ordinance passes to increase campaign contributions to fifty-five hundred dollars per candidate from each contributor, Huntington Beach will have funding limits allowed that are two to three times more than the other top three cities in Orange County. Huntington Beach has a population of one hundred ninety-seven thousand. Anaheim, with a population of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, nearly one and a half times that of Huntington Beach, allows contributions of twenty-two hundred dollars. Santa Ana, with a population of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, allows a maximum of one thousand dollars. And Irvine, with a population of two hundred and sixty thousand, nearly sixty thousand more constituents than Huntington Beach, allows a maximum contribution of five hundred and fifty dollars. Clearly, a fifty-five hundred dollar campaign contribution far exceeds that of the other O.C. cities. It is unseemly, Mayor Strickland, and council members Van der Mark, Burns, and McKeon, to hear you are considering this huge of an increase. This smacks of the elite, rich residents having a far greater tool to reach their elected officials than that of middle and lower-income voters, as well as many Huntington Beach seniors on fixed incomes. If passed, it means candidates in Huntington Beach are beholden to rich corporations and individuals who hope their money will get votes in individuals who hope their money will get votes in their favor. Shame on you for this blatant power grab. During the campaign, you stated, stop the power grab. Now we know who's doing the power grab.
Hi, my name is Bronwyn Windenberg. I was the grand marshal for OC Pride this year, and I am the first out lesbian Real Housewife of Orange County. I have grown up in Orange County. My parents met at Eldon Liquor 50 years ago. This town has been my home for 45 years, and I have seen the queer community make progress, and in the last few years, I have seen it go a little bit backwards. But I'm not here as a gay woman today. I am here as the mom to seven children, some of which are part of the LGBTQIA+ community. The Trevor Project has done one of the most extensive research on our kids today and their mental health. Queer kids contemplate suicide at 45%, and they attempt it at 18%. That is more than double their straight counterparts. Now, part of this project was, what can we do to help queer kids? What can we do to help their mental health? And, you know what they found? That having a supportive community could help kids feel more at home and could keep them from taking their own life. A flag can save a child's life. I'm sure many of you are parents, I'm sure many of you are here. If a flag can save one kid's life, one kid, isn't it worth it to fly it for one month?
My name is Lena, and these are my seven kids here tonight with my wife. We told our story on a Hulu documentary this summer called Mormon No More, where we get to talk all about our love story of being two soccer moms that fell in love. I am asking for you to vote no on item 30, because as an HB mom of seven, six of them at Smith &amp; Wyr, this is 2023. You can still feel the dark undercurrent of homophobia in our community, and each of us here in our family has encountered it at the park, at school, and the kids who are bullying my children are raised by other members in this community. All of our children deserve to grow up in a town that accepts them, their siblings, and their moms. I understand our family is a walking pride flag. We represent who we are. We understand that that's something we take on. But representation is everything. The rainbow flag is not just a celebration of our identity, it's also an indication of allyship and safe spaces. Our community deserves to feel safe. The impact that seeing a pride flag in our city can have on young LGBTQ+ questioning people is immeasurable. The pride flag hoisted is a sign that our community is starting to recognize the importance of inclusion across all orientations and all identities.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rich Bowman. I've been a resident here in Huntington for about 20 years, and my first time here, this is pretty exciting just to be a part of this. I'm actually representing a lot of people. It wouldn't seem like what I'm about to share is, I guess, evident out in the community, but I represent a lot of my neighbors, friends, and even somebody had a medical appointment this morning, and that is the issue of the flag. Last summer, I remember walking up to the library and seeing the flag, and I thought, why is that flying up there? Just clueless, right? And I was just looking at it, and I started mentioning it to some of my neighbors. And what's really interesting, and I've heard a lot of the speakers tonight talk about divisiveness and how it's not very inclusive if you take it down, and I just, another lady mentioned, our community is very inclusive. My neighbors are wonderful, we're all diverse, we come from a lot of different backgrounds, and some of them are also LGBT, and it's like, we're a very inclusive community. So granted, I don't see everybody's, I'm just coming at this from my little world. I also don't really, you know, for the elderly people in our neighborhood, they don't get it, and again, I understand they're from a different era, but if we're talking about including everybody and making people feel welcome, there's a lot of people in our community that aren't here tonight that it makes them feel, they don't get it, and they do feel Obviously, a different perspective. I think I'm one of two people that shared this, and it's a little unnerving, but I support it, and I just, I think our government should really stay out of all the social stuff and just pay attention to, like, the main issues at hand, which is just leading, so. And there was also another gentleman, I'm sort of of the mindset, too, I think Mr. Burns, wherever you are, said something about allowing all the other flags. I just think, if you make an allowance for one person, you got to make it for the next one, and the next one, and then where does that end, right? So, anyway, I just appreciate you guys allowing all of us opportunity to speak. Whatever you end up voting, that was myself and some neighbors in Huntington that are viewpoint. And by the way, just from listening, it'd be nice for the older people, too, if you let them do the Zoom call check-in, so I think that'd be pretty cool. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
My name is Ashley Williamson. I live here. In 1970, the late Mary Helen Hoff's husband was, as so many others during the Vietnam War. She transformed her grief and spearheaded the need for a symbol that service members who are prisoners of war or were declared missing in action. Collaborating with another flag maker, she helped design the POW MIA flag you see today. Also in 1970, a country boy, born and raised in Kansas, named Gilbert Baker, was serving in the US Army. He was an experienced medic and nurse assisting soldiers returning from war. Shortly after his service years, he met another veteran named Harvey Milk. They both faced discrimination for being gay, and together, they transformed their grief, seeing a need for a symbol that is inclusive to their identity. Five months before Harvey Milk's assassination, Gilbert Baker had designed and was flying the rainbow pride flag at the June 1978 Gay Freedom Day Parade. Freedom. Freedom is an outstanding truth that the United States of America and her children have fought for since conception. Freedom to pray how we want, freedom to be who we want, and freedom to love who we want. But how do we know we are free? What does recognizing freedom looks like? Can it be hoisting a flag? How too can we not acknowledge the timing of the proposal to not fly the pride flag? Last June, an angry newscaster for OAN posted a video that was widely shared across the nation, making Huntington Beach the trending topic and calling the pride flag effing garbage, with demands for it to be taken down. She said the current city council that allowed the pride flag during Pride Month should be fired. She demanded the only flag that should be flown is the American one. With almost the exact same wording on the agenda, it is not lost on us, the message that is being sent by granting her wish and caving to her demands, because that's what you would be doing. No amount of patriotism will distance this proposal from her words and homophobic sentiments. The city was mocked for this, and as if she represented all of us. It's been less than eight months since that video was shared, and I beg you not to lean into her hate. We all deserve freedom from hate, even the VA flies the pride flag. I am a tax-paying citizen of Huntington Beach. I am bisexual. I am an activist. I fight for freedom from hate. The pride flag represents me, my child, my family, and my friends. It represents us as citizens of Huntington Beach. Let it stay. Show that we won't be manipulated by petty hateful words. We're here, we're queer, we're regular, hard-working citizens of Surf City, USA, and you really need to get used to it.
Good evening. Good evening. I recall Mayor Strickland making a commitment to never reducing the three-minute public comment time in an effort to make public participation a priority. With that in mind, I urge you to support item 32 to reinstate the remote citizen participation for public comment. We should always take advantage of new tools as they come available. Just because Zoom came into use during the COVID health emergency doesn't mean it should be eliminated just because the health emergency has ended. I am lucky to be generally able-bodied. However, I have a friend who is permanently in a wheelchair, and the additional burden required for her to be able to participate in city business is simply not fair. I also have friends that cannot drive at night, have the responsibility of caring for young children or seniors, or have found themselves sick on council meeting days. Not only is it important for council members to hear from those residents, it's important for other citizens to hear for those residents, too. We should all know what's on their minds. Again, let's use all tools available to us, and please vote yes on item 32 for all residents. In that same vein, supporting all residents, I urge you to vote no on item 30. Flags are symbols. The American flag has 13 stripes symbolizing the original 13 colonies. Those stripes are red to symbolize the bloodshed by those who fought for our freedom, and white to symbolize our purity and independence. The 50 stars symbolize our 50 states, and the blue background symbolizes justice for all. We fly flags on city flag poles for symbolism, too. We symbolize that we are a city in California, in the United States of America. We also fly flags to welcome people. When people from our sister city, Anjo, Japan, are visiting, it has been customary to fly their flag as a symbol to welcome those visitors, just as they do when we visit their city. Wouldn't it be embarrassing for that custom to be only one-sided? The whole community was excited when the Ocean View Little League team won the World Series. As part of the celebration, the Little League flag was flown. Hopefully, a local team will win again in the future, and what a shame it would be if they didn't have the same kind of celebration. As we expect to welcome the 2028 Olympic surfing competition, it would be customary to welcome those competitors and all those Olympic fans intending to spend money here with the Olympic flag. And it seems clear that the pride flag flying in June is symbolic of Huntington Beach being a welcoming place for all. A rainbow is the full spectrum of color. The pride flag represents the full spectrum of people and all their variety. The pride flag does not symbolize excluding people who are heterosexual. The pride flag does not symbolize excluding people whose religious beliefs are different. It simply symbolizes that this city is welcoming to all. To remove the flag that has already been approved would flip that message and make it clear that this council wants to send the symbolic message that not all people are welcome here. I truly hope you don't mean that.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Reverend Judy Tomlinson. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. I'm here to speak against the ordinance that limits the flag displays at city facilities and in favor of flying the rainbow flag during Pride Month. You've heard so many impassioned speeches this evening about the value and importance of flying that flag. It is a flag of affirmation and inclusion. It is a sign that here in Huntington Beach, all people belong regardless of whom they love. LGBTQ young people are a vulnerable group. They're much more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. So while it's important that all people feel that they are welcome here in Huntington Beach and that they belong, it is especially important for LGBTQ young people, for their mental and spiritual health and well-being. The simple act of announcing that all are welcome here by displaying the rainbow flag is a sign of hope, respect, and kindness to all that I'm sure that the health, well-being, and safety of everyone of Huntington Beach citizens is something that our city council leaders want to extend to the whole community.
Many years ago, I complained to code enforcement about three buildings that I felt were unsafe, and one of them was, I felt, in really bad shape. And so the city came down, and within a year, the place was demolished. And another building was a historical building, and that took a while for the city to take action and fix the place. Another one was a historical building, and that one will probably always look shabby. It's not my decision whether or not the city decides to take action on a building that's unsafe. The city, the city inspector, that's who decides about the buildings, and that's the way it should be. Because I am not an architect, I'm not an engineer, I'm not qualified to decide what buildings should be torn down or fixed. With this idea of, if you want to complain about, to City Hall, to code enforcement, you have to run down to City Hall, wait in line, show them your driver's license. It's to keep people from complaining. And my gosh, this is what this country is founded on, complaining. Everyone has a point of view, everyone has an opinion, and if my opinion differs from your opinion, does that mean my opinion is inferior to yours? And I just really think it's a bad idea. You guys are going to come up with good ideas, and you guys are going to come up with bad ideas. And I don't know, years ago when I complained, I was able to be anonymous, just picked up the phone, said, hey, you know, you guys need to look at this building, I really think it's unsafe. If I had to go now and go downtown, fill out a form, give them my driver's license, what's going to be next? Am I going to be fingerprinted? Am I going to have mugshot? This sounds more like a totalitarian dictatorship, and very unreasonable to me. And it's basically meant to keep people from speaking their mind. And I've been attending these meetings for years, and I just feel that's so important that [bleep] people be heard. Thank you.
You know, when I was growing up, when I was growing up, it was during Andy Griffith, The Andy Griffith Show, with the sheriffs, you know, with the fishing rod, with his son, and, I mean, and the only, I mean, and he was a sheriff, and he took care of everything. There wasn't that many laws, and every so little time, we keep on adding laws, and laws and laws, and laws don't expire. And this is getting kind of nuts. And one of the things that I had, I mean, is the police department, $99 million, that's all I know that you guys give them every year, since 2022, it was approved for 99 million, 10% more, insane, insane. Afghanistan doesn't even pay more, it pays less money to keep our, for 20 years, every year, they spend less money than us. I mean, it's 99 million dollars a year, I don't know where they spend it, but I've been hassling them a while because they've been screwing me over, and now, this is the last thing that they did, is that they waited until the very last, well, they couldn't wait until two more days, because then they were allowed to tow my car for an expired registration that I had no clue about, but they didn't, but they still demanded to take my car, and one of the police officers said, we need his car. So, now, I have a Tesla, so I was pretty sure when he said that, it sounded like really evil, like they needed to get a hold of the car so they could do something to it. And they would not, they kicked me out there, they put handcuffs on me, it was insane, okay? And you know how much towing is now? Let me tell you how much, I mean, a regular person, for whatever reason, gets charged. He gets charged $173 just for a release fee from the police department. $173. $173 just to get a piece of paper that says, okay, release the, release the car. And then, after that, I got, I got a bill for three hours. Three hours I had the car over there, $755 for the tow, the tow company. And they say they don't make any money off it, it says they make money off it. These guys are making, I mean, this is worse. If we had the mob, if we had the mob instead of the cops, it would be way better run. It would have been, it would be so freaking, it's true, it's true. Because if, if a soldier or anything does anything to you, you tell somebody else and you tell a support, a higher up, and then they take care of it. They apologize to your family, they apologize to everybody. Seriously, everybody, everybody has, they had morals. These guys, it's insane. They took every, I mean, now it's $173 for, how is somebody, a kid supposed to, if they get a car and then they get it towed and then after they sell it, you still owe money? And then after that, if they owe money to the city, then, then they have a warrant for their arrest and then it goes into the NCIS, the National Crimes Information Systems, and it does. And once it goes in there, they'll never get a job as a banker, they'll never get a job. This is insane. We're supposed to have our kids protected by these guys. Instead, they're clays, they're clowns. Thank you for having enough balls to say it to clap. Everybody else wants to, but they're afraid.
Mayor, I'm going to read the next 10 names. Okay. Mary Jo Berettich, Bobby King, Ally Plum, Doug Von Dolan, Kat Navetta, Pat Goodman, Catherine Goddard, Dr. Richard Harrison, Wendy Schwartz and Denise Hawes, Riley Einck, I-E-I-N-H. Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Strickland, council members. Pat Goodman from Huntington Beach. I just want to thank Chief Parra for his report he gave last session and for Mayor Protem van der Mark for pushing it forward and to Ms. Moser for suggesting a study session on the homeless services. I just wanted to focus my comments on a couple of the slides that Chief Parra presented. And there seemed to be some questions around what the daily cost to stay at the navigation center is. So I took his report and pulled out the cost of the land and the building is close to $13 million. And I think we all agree on that. Some things we may not agree on, but in the accounting world, this is how it's done. Land is appreciated, it's not applied to any kind of operational costs. The cost of the building would be depreciated over the life of the, its use. And it's a legitimate cost to the operations. So I factored in the cost of the sprung unit over a 25-year period, even though we know it's a temporary shelter, the building itself could have use in other areas. So I added that together and I got, for the 19 months of operation, $4,193. And I divided it by the 55,072 bed nights to come up with a rate of $76. Now, be aware, I did not include the salaries of the homeless task force and other staff. The general fund contribution to that is $12, just to be clear, for that 19-month period. The city should probably do some kind of allocation time study to apply the salaries to the navigation center because those presented did services for the Be Well and maybe some other activities. So other items that I've heard is who pays for homeless services or who's responsible? And yes, the county is, and they get a load of money that they filter onto our cities. And each city, though, has the supreme authority for developing housing to meet the demands of its residents. And that's your job. And that's why we have a planning department. And that's why you do a housing element. And I don't want to be condescending, but I think we're sending misinformation to the people of Huntington Beach and people need housing, period. And we know it costs a lot. The other agenda items that I want, oops, okay, next time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mary Jo Berettich. I'm a member of the Mobile Home Advisory Board and I've lived in Huntington Beach for 40 years. I'm concerned about item, Agenda Item 11, the amendment to increase spending for campaign contributions. If this ordinance passes to increase campaign contributions to 5,500 per candidate for each contributor, Huntington Beach will have fundings allowed that are two to three times more than other three cities in Orange County. In addition to the candidates that are already allowed to receive contributions, this is also called independent expenditures with no caps. And it is unseemingly to hear you considering this large increase. Yes, we are the fourth-largest city in Orange County, but our municipal code, Section 2.07.050, already allows for a reasonable limit on monetary contributors, contributions. Independent contributions are different, as you know. Requesting that amount to be raised up to the contributions for Assembly and Senate limits, which is currently 5,500, is not reasonable. Our local candidates are only running for the position in our city, not campaigning throughout the entire Assembly or Senate districts. The other three larger cities can be compared. Each of these cities have municipal codes, very strict municipal codes, that establish the acceptable campaign contributions. Anaheim, with a population of 347,000, allows $2,200. Santa Ana, with a population of 3,350, allows a maximum of $1,000. Irvine, with a population of 260,000, allows a maximum contribution of 550 as of 2022. And here in Huntington Beach, with a population of 197,000, our monetary contribution limit in 2020 is 620. Each year, it can be raised based upon the Consumer Price Index, CPI. This issue needs to be a vote of the citizens of Huntington Beach, not just a city council majority vote. If the council insists upon this, then it needs to be placed on the 2024 June primary. And thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Bobby King. And I am here to ask you to please reinstate the Zoom participation for all public city meetings. I use Zoom to be able to read my cert, read my speech easily. As you can see, I am visually impaired. Okay. The availability of Zoom participation has enabled me to attend more meetings up until now. In fact, I have attended meetings from Las Vegas and Tampa, Florida. I have attended meetings when I had COVID and when I had the flu. Those, there are many, as you've noticed tonight, people in the same situation that I am in. I ask you, I ask you to please reinstate the Zoom program for all of the public meetings. Please vote yes on item number 32. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, and excellent city staff and concerned citizens. Thank you for sitting here, listening to all this. I know this is a long evening. I do appreciate the time. The City Council's Mobile Home Advisory Board heard a presentation on January 23 about the need for a comprehensive, oh, wait a minute, I'm Ally Plum and I live in an immobile home in Huntington Beach for about a decade. The Mobile Home Advisory Board approved a recommendation to the city council that it fund this study for $10,000. We were told that we had to present it that evening so that if it passed, it would qualify for this year's budget. Lo and behold, it is not on the agenda for tonight. I can only surmise that this means affordable housing for mobile home residents is not important to the city council or its staff. This issue cannot be put off until next year. We need affordable rents now. And this market study will enable council leaders and city staff to gain valuable information that will help them make important decisions about our future. Please let us know the final date you may consider for funding out of the current year's budget and also please let us know when it will be put on the city council agenda. And I see that a number of agenda items tonight are for professional service contracts, services contracts. This is a way to avoid the bidding process when such a process is not in the best interest of the city. This is such a case with the market study recommended by the Mobile Home Advisory Board on January 23. When surveyed last year, all institutions of higher education in Huntington Beach indicated they were not willing to compete in a bid process for less than $40,000. Advance OC, a highly reputable nonprofit resource organization, is willing to do the study for $10,000. It has done studies for the OC Board of Supervisors, other OC cities, and now the California Master Plan for Aging. They will do the study in five languages and submit at its conclusion a professional report to the city and the Mobile Home Advisory Board. And also, I would like to speak on Agenda Item 30. Please vote against that. I think all flags have a place and the pride flag is a beautiful flag for the month of June. And also on Agenda Item number 32, please bring Zoom back. My 92-year-old neighbor misses being able to watch. My 86-year-old neighbor across the street can't watch anymore, so I'd like Zoom back. So thank you so much for allowing me this time.
Good evening. My name is Doug Von Dolan and I'm speaking in opposition to item 11 on tonight's agenda related to campaign reform. As people have mentioned, it's going to increase per person, per cycle donations from $620 to $5,500, a ninefold increase. So why do candidates in Huntington Beach, including our elected city attorney, treasurer, and clerk, suddenly need all this campaign money? Maybe we should look back at 2022 for some clues. The grassroots Fab Four Plus, Mr. Gates' team, actually started with Mayor Strickland raising an unprecedented $100,000 by July 1 and spending a good chunk of that early money on mailings and ads for the full team. Everyone else rode on his shoulders. For example, Councilmember McKeon had only raised $8,000 by that point and Councilmember van der Mark had raised $12,000, but $10,000 had been a loan that she had given to her campaign. Most of Mayor Strickland's donations didn't come from Huntington Beach either. A good chunk didn't even come from California. They came from national GOP fundraisers like Evan Handy, Chip Englander, Jeff Miller, Todd Cranny, Tyler Moore, Jake Parsons, Becky Donatelli, Bill Paxton, and Chris Garcia. These folks have known Mayor Strickland for years. He's sort of a fundraising legend here in California, for good or bad. But a city council race in a sleepy little beach, beach town still seems like pretty small potatoes for these guys. Except this little beach town likes to pick fights with Sacramento and the GOP isn't doing very well with statewide California elections these days. So a group of DC lobbyists found a cheap and effective way to stick it to Sacramento by pouring money into a Huntington Beach city council race. And judging by the reporters that have been here tonight and some of the stories in the papers lately, they're getting a pretty good return on their investment so far. So why not pour a little more money in for 2024 and beyond, right? If you agree with the current city council, you might think putting this AstroTurf plan on steroids is a good idea. Unfortunately, left-wingers have plenty of donors and money in DC too. So expect to see some housing equity think tanks bringing you some extremely well-funded YIMBY candidates with exciting high-density builders' remedy plans down the road. They're coming. And they don't care about Huntington Beach either. My request then is for you current office holders to put some guardrails on this new process. A good start might be to pledge not to take any out-of-state donations from this point forward. Raise at least half your money from people in Huntington Beach. And only campaign with other candidates to take this same pledge. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Goddard and I've lived in Huntington Beach since the 1980s. And I'm here tonight also to speak about Measure 11, or not Measure 11, Topic 11, I'll call it. I would ask you to withdraw it from the consent calendar tonight and provide an area for open discussion with the citizens of Huntington Beach. Many of us have concerns, you've heard some of them tonight. But fundamentally, I believe, removing the $620 cap or moving it to $5,500 per individual is, I don't understand the need to do that. I don't understand why we haven't had a discussion about the implications of that for how we manage our city and how we select our officers. And I believe it opens the door wide to contributions from outside of our city. We all know that in today's world, we consider corporations to be individuals. Corporations, including hedge funds and venture capitalists and any other kind of corporation you might want to come up with, could very easily, including the political parties if you want to go there, could very easily contribute thousands and thousands of dollars given this new limit, we'll call it. But not explaining it to the people is the fundamental problem. So withdrawing it tonight and setting an open conversation several times so individuals, members of the community, citizens that elect their council members to manage the city can participate in this decision, I think that is the way to go tonight and I would urge you to do so. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kat Navetta. I'm a citizen of Huntington Beach. And in 2021, city council voted unanimously to raise the rainbow flag for the month of June to honor gay pride. I think that's a wonderful decision. And it was about diversity and inclusion, which was the entire theme of Huntington Beach, trying to come together HB1, or 1HB it was. And it wasn't lost on us. And it sent a message to the citizens of Huntington Beach, gay and straight, that everybody is valued, everybody is respected, and everybody is accepted. And that was a strong message. I heard some people tonight talking about how the gay flag somehow excludes straight people. That's obviously not true. That's very silly. And they say it's not necessary to have the gay flag or to send this message, but I'm going to say that it is necessary. In just 2015, we had a citizen of Huntington Beach spend his time, energy, and money to try to place a measure on the state ballot to make homosexuality illegal and punishable by death. A citizen of Huntington Beach tried, placed, tried to place a measure on the ballot to make homosexuality punishable by death. There is a theme, when not checked, that people think they have the right to tell other people what they can and can't do in their own home. And that's not okay. The rainbow flag was an easy way to tell people, we've got you, we got your back and you are valued. It tells the children, it tells the adults that they're going to be okay. Spending time and energy and voting on this tonight sends a different message. It sends a message that you don't want everybody to have the same opportunities, you don't value everybody the same, and we're not all equal. I'm urging the council to vote no or to vote present so that we are able to I'm urging the council to vote no or to vote present so that we are able to fly the rainbow flag and any other flag that the council wants to vote on. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Riley Emch. I am a gay man living here in Orange County. I'm not going to speak to the council about Agenda Item Number 30 because I am certain that they have already made up their minds about it. Instead, I'm going to speak about Agenda Item 30 to you, working people of Huntington Beach and of Orange County. At the end of the day, even if they decide to continue to fly this flag, it will be a symbolic gesture. It will do nothing to stop the political, social, and economic discrimination and oppression that queer people face every single day in this country, in this state, in this county, and in this city. It will not stop the practice of conversion therapy that abandons countless queer youth to torture and death. It will not end the discrimination that we face in housing, in the workplace, and in our homes. It will not stop the assault placed from state legislatures on the transgender community that threatens to legislate them out of existence and act bordering on genocide. It will not stop any of that. And even if they wanted to stop that, they couldn't. Only you can. And if you aren't concerned about this, you should be, because an attack on one is an attack on all. When the rich and powerful tell you who to hate based on race, based on gender, sexual orientation, gender, or anything else, they are trying to divide and conquer you by inspiring you to collaborate with them, to oppress one part of the working class while inspiring another to collaborate with them, and you have a material interest to protect them because when they do that, they can lower your wages, they can deprive you of the labor rights that your ancestors fought and died for. So I will say this. If you do not stand now to protect your queer American worker fellows, you will be next.
So my name is Wendy Schwartz, and I live in a community called the Glenmar Track in Huntington Beach. And Councilmember Kalmak, Moser, and Vandermark probably remember me from -- I've been doing this for three or four years, trying to fight for this frontage wall. I was born in the track almost 60 years ago, and the first picture is what the frontage area looked like when the track was first built. And since that time, that particular frontage road has been neglected and forgotten by the city of Huntington Beach. So for the past four years, I've been diligently fighting to try to get it to a point where it's safe. If you guys look at the photos behind the first one, there's several areas that you can tell that it's not safe. I did have some members here from my community. They're all up there in that corner. One little lady, she's about 80 years old, she fell and hurt herself. We had several dogs that have ran and gotten killed because of the way that it is right now. And then in addition, just the beautification of it. If you guys drive by it, it's Adams and Bouchard, Yorktown, Magnolia. It's really, really embarrassing. I'm also a local realtor in the area, so when I bring people in there to show them the community that I live in, that they would love to live in, it's embarrassing to drive them in that. And the community has really, really been pushing me hard. There's 697 residents in that Glenmar Track. So I want to personally thank Sean Crumbie because since we met on September 20, when I was talking with you guys when they were trying to push the lodge pole, he's really been a good advocate, and he's been very communicative with me regarding the progress of the frontage area. However, with the last CIP funds that were actually, I think, originally given to us about three years ago, he's finally now able to get them implemented just because of COVID and several other things that have transpired. But I'm asking the new members, please don't forget me, please don't forget this road, please listen to Sean and the Public Works Department. It's been a long time, and after 60 years, this little area, it's one little square mile, and there's so many people that it means so much to. And I don't want anybody to get hurt and a lawsuit to happen in order for it to really get done. So please listen to Sean and the Public Works Department. When they come to you with the rest of the bid, I know he's got the plans done, and the remainder balance, I believe, is around $1.2 million to complete the project. And we're hoping that when they start it in March, that they can continue it and finally finish it after years of fighting. Hopefully, I won't see you guys another year. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Dr. Richard Harrison, and I'm a proud 25-year resident of Huntington Beach. I also serve as Community and Library Services Commissioner for this great city. Some of you know me personally. In addition to being a doctor and a commissioner, I also volunteer in my time with at-risk youth. Many of them are gay, many of them are addicted to drugs, and I don't mean marijuana. I mean hard drugs that are ruining their lives. Most of them have the same story. They feel rejected by their families, rejected by their churches, misunderstood at home and at work, and rejected by society in general. This may surprise you, but I know exactly how they feel. As a gay man who grew up in an earlier era, I know what it feels like to be rejected and misunderstood. When we speak of the pride flag, it's worth remembering what we're proud of. It wasn't so long ago, in my own memory, that LGBTQ people felt hunted in the streets and victims of callous violence almost constantly. We had to hide our struggles, pressured to change at the most fundamental level, or else. We're proud because we have overcome stigma and threats to stand shoulder to shoulder with our fellow citizens. Today, even pastors preach compassion for the essential humanity of the LGBT community, even if we disagree spiritually. We are employees, business owners, veterans, police officers, doctors, and even elected and appointed city officials. Pat, I served with you on the commission, and I saw your genuine concern for veterans and our seniors. All I'm asking is that you show that same laudable compassion to the rest of us, especially our youth that have been rejected at all levels. They need to know that their city council cares about them, too. I'm not asking for you to sacrifice your most cherished beliefs or your own lifestyle. I'm not asking you for special treatment. We flew the pride flag last year, and I was never more proud of Huntington Beach, and I'm actually so proud of Huntington Beach today, too. What message does it send to take that symbol of hope away? We are better than that. Huntington Beach has a little of everything: veterans and surfers, churchgoers and hippies, gay and straight. For 30 days, not all year, just 30 days during a federally recognized month of remembrance, let's set aside those differences and show those disenfranchised kids that they are wanted, valued, and appreciated by their community. 24 hours from now, I will be seated where you are seated, doing my job as commissioner for this council. I hope that your actions today don't make me feel like a second-class citizen, and more importantly, don't make those youth fighting for their lives feel like second-class citizens. They have suffered enough. May God bless this council, and God bless the city of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Strickland, I'm just going to call what I have left, all right? It's Sean Drexler, Ken Inoue, Dave Sullivan, Laura Sire, Mike B., Zignesh Padare, Nathan Rene, J.R. Owens, Ava Rains, Jody Preston, Jackie Steele, Briscoe, and S.J. Please come down.
Go ahead. I'm Dave Sullivan. I agree that the only flags in our city -- I agree with your position, Mr. Burns, and hopefully the majority of the council. I have a little vision problem as well at age 85, but anyways, we're working on this. You should have the flags you mentioned, plus the POW flag, as a memorial to those that saved our country and served and risked their lives in the process against evil people. I'm Irish, and let me tell you a little history of Boston. I return a lot, have a lot of friends there, and I subscribe to the Boston Herald, so I know what's going on there. When my grandfather arrived from Ireland in about 1880, and I was privileged, since I'm 85, to actually speak with him, he was greeted at trying to get a job by signs that said, "No Irish or dogs need apply." Therefore, his only opportunity was to work on schooners that did fishing for pennies. Unfortunately also, they sometimes would go out quite a distance fishing, and there'd be a storm, and a number were killed. Obviously, he survived. So when I graduated from high school, I received a full scholarship to Harvard, but I decided to go to Boston College because I knew that my Irish ancestors had made donations, and they had very little money. It was a big donation for somebody with very little money, so I wanted to go to a place that had those same principles.
Mayor, you've got 20 seconds.
How much? Okay. Let me just say that that guy that wrote that thing about Gracie Vandemarck is an idiot.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Candy Nellway. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm here to speak on Item 30. Councilman Burns, I appreciate the fact that you specifically included the prisoners of war and missing MIA's in your resolution, but I'd also like to remind you, as a veteran, that when I joined the military, I took an oath of office, just like you did, to uphold the Constitution so that it protects every man, woman, and child in this country, regardless of race, religion, or sexual orientation. So for that reason, I respectfully request that you, all of you, consider the seriousness of your oath, and that if you at least can't vote for it, vote present, because it's real clear that the people of Huntington Beach stand in opposition to this resolution. Thank you so very much.
My name is Jody Preston. I've been in Huntington Beach since 1981, and I am also talking about the flag. I had a speech, but now, after all this, I kind of want to address some of that, but I'll try to be fast. For about a year and a half, starting with the flag flying, so the first June I saw it, I have been trying to get the Christian flag waving a month, and I called the city, left messages, never got a response. I mailed every council member and Mr. Gates, never a response, never, excuse my language, go to hell, screwed up, whatever, nothing, which I think is even more rude. So I hear a lot of the inclusivity and all that. And my grandchildren would say, what about me? Where's my inclusivity? No, I do not relate to the gay flag. I am offended by it. I have a gay brother. I love him very much. If something were to happen to him, I would be the first one on the plane to New York. But that's not. So inclusive, okay, so I have the Christian flag. How about Nazis? I'm sure we have some white Nazi people in Huntington Beach. How about the Confederate flag? I'm sure we have some loyal Southerners here. I know. How about the Islamic flag? We could put the Israeli flag up, the Palestinian flag up. Where does it end? Who do you say is not included now? It's kind of, you know, so really, I think the list on the agenda probably includes everyone. We all live in Huntington Beach. We all live in Orange County. If we don't like here, we can leave pretty easily. We live in California. Some of us want to leave, but we really love this place despite its problems in the United States of America, which, you know, our military is part of it. So I think it's a great idea, or tell me when I can put my Christian flag up for a month.
Madam Clerk, is that everybody?
Well, yeah. I've read all the names, so if I read your name, please come up and take a microphone.
Very good. Good evening, City Council. My name is Sean Drexler. I grew up here in Orange County. I still live here. While there has been an undeniable increase in LGBTQ visibility and acceptance over the past decades, that visibility has not consistently translated into policy that protects their rights or corrects the various forms of systemic oppression they face. To this day, for instance, LGBTQ youth are 120% more likely to experience homelessness than their non-LGBTQ peers. LGBTQ youth make up up to 40% of the homeless youth population, mostly due to being forced out of or running away from an unsupportive household. Now, I realize flying the pride flag during June won't fix the systemic oppression LGBTQ people face. Flags are symbolic after all. At the same time, I have to ask, what does introducing an ordinance that would effectively prohibit displays of the pride flag on the city property symbolize? Does this symbolize that LGBTQ people aren't celebrated in HB? I know for a fact that's not true, so that symbolism doesn't make sense. Does it symbolize that LGBTQ people are not welcome here? Again, at least for the people I know in HB, that is certainly not true. So what does introducing an ordinance that would prohibit displays of the flag symbolize? I mean, is this just a wedge issue used to divide the working class, the very class which a majority of LGBTQ people belong to? Let me say that in a more direct way. LGBTQ people are part of the majority of this country, the working class. The victories and visibility achieved by LGBTQ people in this country have been primarily of benefit to those who are working class. So when steps like this are taken to prohibit the display of the flag celebrating the achievements and existence of LGBTQ people, this is a refusal to celebrate achievements that have been hard-won by an essential part of the working class, which, again, is the majority of this country. The history of this country is one of working-class struggles and victories which have improved the lives of millions of people. Let's continue to celebrate those accomplishments, not attempt to diminish or hide them. So I urge City Council to vote no on Agenda Item 30, vote yes on Agenda Item 32, reinstate Zoom public participations, and yeah, withdraw Item 11. The people united will never be defeated.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Honorable Mayor. Everyone's looking a little tired, and I know I am too, so I had some comments. I'm Laura Sire, by the way, sorry, and a long time, long, long time resident of Huntington Beach. I am here to speak about, what is it, against, I guess, right? Agenda Item 20, 30. Sorry about that. It's item number 30, Agenda Item, and it's the flag that's been talked about, and so many people spoke so well this evening. I just want to share something a little different on this topic. I was lucky enough to be at the ceremony on the May 2021, because this flag's actually been flown the last two years. And I have to say, after living here so long in this city, that that day was truly joyous for me. And I don't know, you could just, it was, just felt so loving, and I really liked it. And I want to thank the previous council, and I think Kim Carr and Dan Kalnick were the ones who initiated or whatever, but of course Natalie Mosher and Dan, and thank you so much. I think Rhonda, you came later, but I know how you would have. Anyway, it was really a great day, and the flag is, represents not just, it's, the pride flag represents the whole world internationally. It's a global celebration of hope and diversity, and it's just about freedom about to be who you truly are. And I had, I had friends there that day, and I was just, I guess that was a lot of it too. I was really happy to see some of my, my friends there too, on that day, being happy. The other thing, just like the gentleman who was just here, many of the transgender and gay, or the LGBTQ, it has, they have a very high rate of homelessness, of being victims of hate crimes and suicide. It's, it's all true. So the flag is, doesn't do that, that much, but it's like, other people have said, it's like, it's a, it shows that you care, that we care, and that we're a welcoming city. And I just want to close with a quote I found from when this was passed, a couple years back in May, when the flag was originally passed, the raising of the flag. Okay, okay, here it is, really quick, thank you. "I thought I would tell you what that flag means to me." This is from a 12-year-old. "It means you see me, and it means I am perfect the way I am."
Hello, my name is Mike B., and I've been a Huntington Beach resident for about 30 years. Ostensibly, this is about the flag ordinance, but really, it's about wokeism. And though there are some things about wokeism that bug me, they're trivial and inconsequential, in my opinion. I support progressivism, despite that trendy name for it. And the reason is because this is not the world that I came into when I was younger. For example, in 1973, when I graduated from high school, there were 4 billion people on this planet. Now there are 8 billion, and there's going to be a lot more than that in the next 25 years, let alone 50. Here are some things that I have observed as a school counselor and teacher over the course of more than three decades. I've seen over 17,000 students, spoke with them personally. We used to, when we had poor kids bused to our school, we were in upper-middle-income neighborhood, and the poor kids used to go down the hallway and scratch their faces with their middle finger all the time, and they wouldn't do their homework, and they did poorly, and we did everything we could to support them. When I left that position, those kids realized, there's nothing in that for me, and they did their homework. And as far as LGBTQI, that community, when they started to come to my office, and I saw many, we had many group meetings, we had support clubs and all kinds of things, every one of those kids, if this was a lifestyle choice, they would have all chosen not to be gay, every one of them. They told me in anguish, they told me before they were, they were possibly going to try to commit suicide, kids were 12, 13, and 14 years old. I saw it with my own eyes, heard it with my own ears, over and over again. The Black Lives Matter movement expanded to include all non-white people. It says, "We matter too, as much as you, as much as you so-" Sorry. As much as you treat your, you treat everyone else, and it doesn't mean that anyone who is not of a race other than white, that we hate ourselves. I never, I never understood that whatsoever. So, in this world that's changing, if your family grows, you have to adapt with the times. When your family grows, you want a bigger house. When you have crowded roads, you have lanes and trains, and when water's scarce, you got to deal with it. So progress means growing and growing up and dealing with what is, and so is conservatism. So let's deal with what is, with the people who live in this world, all of them, and neither should dominate, just because we wish it so. So lastly, the rest of this is-
10, 10 seconds, sir.
Thank you. The rest of this is more or less repetition, and I just want to say, if you don't realize that big money is killing this country, then you're on the take.
Thank you.
All right. Hello. My legal name, my Christian name, is Nathan, but my friends call me Renee. I grew up here, in Huntington Beach. I went to elementary school at Hawes, I went to middle school at Sowers, I went to high school at Addison. I'm here to talk about item number 30. You've heard a lot of folks share their personal feelings about the flag, share their experiences, share what it symbolizes. I just want to talk about how deeply ill-informed of a PR move this is to cease flying the flag. If Huntington Beach were some backwater town with a population of attire and the GDP of that fly that flies out of every wallet, then whatever, who cares? But this is a town, as was mentioned before, that hosts 11 million tourists every year. The rationale for ceasing to fly the flag was cited as, you don't want to do anything that may be considered divisive. Huntington Beach is home to a particular element that has been mentioned earlier that is extremely divisive. Ceasing to fly this flag buys into that element. Now, I'm not sure if you're aware, but gay rights are extremely popular. According to Gallup polls, between 60, yes, between 60 and 80% of people are in favor of gay marriage and support extending protections for the LGBTQ+ community. 16 to 20% of Generation Z identify on the LGBTQ+ spectrum. Laverne Cox has hosted the red carpet for the last three years, Andy Cohen and Anderson Cooper has hosted New Year's Eve for the last five, Anderson Cooper by himself for the last 20. For you to think that it's somehow less divisive to prohibit flying this flag than it would be to continue is, at best, deeply out of touch, and at worst, pandering to the very unsavory element that is a stain on our city's reputation. This is a deeply unserious proposal, and for you to carry it forward just shows your lack of commitment to our professed values of inclusivity and just like, you know, being neighborly to one another. This is not how the people I grew up with in Huntington Beach feel, and yeah, that's really all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, Council. My name is Jackie Steele. I am one, one of the chairs of the Stonewall Democratic Club. I am the former co-chair or chair of the LGBTQ+ Advisory Board for the City of West Hollywood, which we've now elevated to a commission so that our community has actual decision-making ability in terms of contracts and equity in the city. I am also a Public Safety Commissioner for the City of West Hollywood. I have a lot of dialogue about the queer community, elevation, empowerment, and working together to help other members of the community come along, okay? Before I go any further, I want to clear something right on up for us. The LGBTQ people in this room were in no way booing the Christian flag. Queers, am I right?
That's right.
Thank you. They were booing the sentiments of the speaker, and what we're not going to do is straightwash their sentiments and shed anything on their voice, okay? So I just wanted to get that off my chest. Thank you. The first pride flag was flown in 1978, the year of my birth. It is now 2023, and here we are discussing the flag yet again. The flag was created to symbolize the value and dignity of what was then called the gay community. Now we've grown to the LGBTQ+, depending on who's sharing it, community, right? In recent years, there's been an unveiling of even more inclusive and expansive flags, with some cities at the forefront, like Philadelphia, releasing the flag with the black and brown stripes, to make sure all of our community was included, righting a long overdue wrong in 2017. The flag has evolved as our community has, and all communities should. Together, we work to understand the evolving need and visibility and inclusion for all. I am a frequent visitor of Huntington Beach for work and for play. Where better to come and play? WeHo's great, but you can't beat a beach, and so I understand and have great relationships with the community. The mutability of the pride flags is a testament to the strength and diversity of the broader queer community, your community, as you've heard here tonight. This is your community. The evolution of the flags encourages us all to keep examining who we are, what we stand for, and what work still needs to be done. The flag is also a symbol of safety and community. Some cities have rainbow flag stickers in their businesses to make sure queer youth know that it's a safe space. I saw that in a cafe in Louisville, Kentucky, and could only think of what that meant for a young youth that needed a safe space to be. What this flag means to the community matters. It says you value them, you see them, and they are safe here. Everyone in this room, whether they like it or not, knows and loves an LGBTQ+ person, and every single one of you do. Honor them. And then before I go, I just wanted to say, I absolutely support the POW and MIA flag. I support that being up year-round. I support our veterans, I want to thank them for their service. I'll remind those of you that LGBTQ people are among our veterans and deserve that respect as well. Thank you for that. In addition, please add back the Zoom option. We have to take care of our seniors and folks that have accessibilities in our disability community. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to say a couple things. I apologize, I got here late tonight, I was working, so I know I missed a lot, I'm sure I missed a lot of interesting and fun conversation, but just in the time I've been here, and I'm referring to Agenda Item 30, I've heard, "Fly this flag because it's trendy." "Fly this flag because it's inclusive, but don't you dare fly the Christian flag next to it." "Fly this flag because kids will commit suicide if you don't fly this flag." What kids need is an ability to cope with any kind of difficulty, and what kids need is to learn to love themselves for who they are, the way that God or nature, or whatever you believe in, created them to be. They need to learn that they are wonderful and beautiful and special the way they are. That's what they need, and they need to learn the ability to cope with difficulties. We all have difficulties in our lives, and until children and kids and teenagers learn coping skills and the ability to cope, suicide will continue to be a problem, and I don't believe it's going to change with whether we fly a flag or not. I heard a comment about big money. Big money is killing this country. Big money in the form of pharma is killing this country. They're poisoning our children, they're looking for any ability to get into our kids to make money for greed. They'll mutilate them, they will poison them, they don't care about cancer, they don't care about these things. And what these flags have come to symbolize, you know, we went from rainbow to rainbow with a brown stripe to rainbow with the triangle, I mean, it's forever-changing, so it's not even certain in and of itself, but now it's come to represent the mutilation of children, or what some of us believe to be, the mutilation of children. And to fly these flags on our government poll, it's abhorrent, and to those of us who believe that that is wrong religiously and spiritually, it is not inclusive, it's very divisive. So these flags are divisive. You can see in this room that the flags are divisive, right? We're not here, you know, singing kumbaya together because of these flags. So it's divisive. The other thing is, this is a legal issue, the Boston case that came out, the government cannot speak to me on a flag poll that my religious beliefs are incorrect. As we can see, the symbol of the rainbow is speech that what I believe is incorrect. So the government cannot do that. The government is echoing basically what we're hearing here in the chambers from the audience, to me, that my religious beliefs are incorrect, and the government cannot do that. That's not permitted under the Constitution, and the Supreme Court made that clear. So I really appreciate you bringing-
Ma'am, you got 10 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you. So I appreciate you for putting this on the agenda, for bringing us together to try to heal under one flag or one set of government flags, to bring our community together again and put all this aside. And we do love everyone in this city. We love, we want to love, we want to build, but we want to do it united.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Speaker.
Hello, my name is Eva Rains, and I am a trans woman, and I live in Huntington Beach. And since the birth of this country, we have all stood for one thing, freedom. How does one define freedom? Freedom is when you are allowed to be yourself, as long as you're not hurting others. Freedom is when we don't judge and let people be who they want to be, and fly their flags when they want to fly them. Us Americans fly the American flag. This flag marks the land of the free, the land of opportunity, a land where you can live life happily without worry, in such a land where we fought tooth and nail to get freedom. We wanted to truly have freedom, correct? Well, what you are proposing, not allowing this flag to fly during the month of June, the month that so many Americans have fought for their lives to have, is against the very foundations of the country of which we stand in currently. We all have the right to life, liberty, and this pursuit of happiness, and by not allowing this flag to fly, you are going against everything that this country stands for. You're going against everything that the, that us Americans stand for. Sure, in some religions, it may be a sin to be how I am. Thing is, not allowing others to show themselves for who they are and live happily goes against the very foundations of all religious texts I have ever read. Aren't we supposed to love thy neighbor? Aren't we supposed to not judge thy neighbor? And pushing religion on others that aren't of that religion is against America as well. If you wish to go against everything that you stand for, your country, your God, then fine, take down the flag during June. Just know that you have now made yourself much more of a sinner and a traitor than I'll ever be in my life.
Good evening, my name's JR Owens. I wanted to speak on two, two items. Item 12, I stand in opposition to this. The ordinance seems overly broad, restrictive, and heavily biased towards business. There are many legitimate reasons why a citizen making a complaint against a business would not want to divulge their name, address, or other personally identifying information. This screams of opening up the door to retribution against individual citizens by business. There's no reason the city can't exercise its own discretion in deciding what resources it has available to address anonymous claims, and in exercising due diligence in screening those claims, without attaching an arbitrary requirement of the complaint providing personally identifying information for the public record. Does the validity of information necessarily hinge on whether or not that information is provided with an official identification? There's no logical approach to this question which would lead to an affirmative answer. I disagree with the letter in spirit of this proposed ordinance, and urge the City Council to reconsider how its proposed ordinance affects the balance of power between business and individual citizens, as well as the ability of the city to effectively oversee business practices and ensure public safety and welfare of the community. On item 16, I'm neutral on this. It reads as, it's just a pay raise for the victim advocate, and I will say I support victim advocates being paid triple what they're paying now. But a scrupulous reader of this, of the items that are on, on the Agenda page, would be hard-pressed to see how the city's getting any consideration for the increased payments to the victim advocate, and it's not clearly spelled out what the city's necessarily getting in return for the increase in payment. It seems like it's, it's the same contract, it's not extended in length or in scope. The only thing that's happening is the city is giving more money and not getting anything in return. And with the time I have left, I want to discuss my- I want to discuss my opinion on the item 30. I didn't really know it was on the Agenda today. But I'll say, I don't identify as LGBTQ, but all my kids do. And I only say this because I want to point out this touches everybody. I will bet your next paycheck, Mr. Mayor, that everyone in this room has had, currently has, or will have someone who identifies as LGBTQ in their family. And there are a lot of things that divide us, but one thing that can bring us together is pride. Pride in our country and what it stands for, pride in pursuing a more perfect union, and pride in how far we've come. I just retired from 20 years in a military that for the most of its existence was segregated to people like me. And now someone who looks like me is running it. Look how far we've come. Women didn't have the right to vote at one point. Now they're running for president. Look how far we've come. When I see that flag, I think the same thing. Look how far we've come. It's not pride for one class of citizen. It's pride for all of us.
Thank you.
Keep it flying.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor Mayor Potem. My name is Jignish Patiar. A quick comment about the homelessness. Just behind the homeless center on Beach Boulevard is the Dutch Haven. That's the neighborhood my parents live in. Just two weeks ago, my dad's van was broken into. Tools were stolen. I'm not saying it's a cause and correlation, but kind of going off what the last lady spoke about here, it seems that the homeless center is meant for Huntington Beach residents or Huntington Beach individuals. Does the city have anything in place for residents that are not Huntington Beach? Is it just like shipping them out somewhere else? I think that would be the best motion, just because I feel the majority of the homeless are not Huntington Beach residents. They're spilling over from L.A. and across the country in some instances as well. I have another story to say here. I have cousins and family that grew up in England. And they're Indian, but they're as British as you can find. Whenever England plays India in a chess cricket match, they always wear Indian jersey. And I'm like, hey, you grew up in London. Why are you wearing an Indian jersey? Because the English people would always pick on them and say, you're not real English. You're Indian. You shouldn't wear that. But every time America's in the Olympics or I see the United States is on the TV, it doesn't matter what person, creed, sexuality they might be, as long as they have the USA flag on their shirt, we're going to root for each other. We're going to be voting for the same thing, which is America, which is exactly what it's always stood for. And we talk about inclusivity, but the American flag is the most inclusive thing on the planet. You have people in other countries. For instance, in Hong Kong, when they're facing subjugation from China, Hong Kong was ruled by the British for over 99 years, yet they chose to fly under the American flag. That flag stood for much more inclusivity and freedom and opportunity than the pride flag ever could. It encapsulates everything that America has fought for. And just like the last gentleman said, it literally is prideful. That is the pride flag, the United States flag. And one last statement. I feel like when we keep handing out these little flag things, we're just giving, give a mouse another cookie. It's going to ask for a glass of milk. Just to hear you guys detest a Christian flag idea, and I'm not even Christian. Like, how hurtful is that to hear? And you want to have preferential treatment? This is not a-- If you wanted equality, there is your flag right there. That represents everyone. This is all about preferential treatment, which does not incorporate what we're trying to do here. It's so divisive that this argument about flags has caused all this to ruffle up. We should come back to what united us in the beginning and it is the American flag, and it has always stood, the testament of time. Sorry that this is getting so crazy for everyone, but we need to understand that at the end of the day, we're all American citizens. We're not pride citizens. So I'm in support of Agenda Item 30, and I think that the only flags we should be flying are the ones that were listed there. Thank you.
I believe I'm the last one, so wake up. Mayor, City Councilmembers and staff, my name is S.J., and I am a non-binary, trans, pansexual. Thank you for giving me a reason to leave my home in Irvine tonight to come and fight for my community. It is the bare minimum to show our community that you acknowledge us and support our existence. Waving the flag is not going to turn someone gay or trans. That's not how it works. You know what it will do? It will make people smile and grateful for being acknowledged in a city where we have seen so much hate against us. It's one reason I don't come to HB very often. The presence of the pride flag doesn't affect those who feel it's divisive whatsoever. It doesn't affect those who are bigots and homophobic. It challenges what you know about the world, and that can be scary. I get it. But not waving the pride flag during Pride Month, which is a whopping 30 days, from the perspective of a city of Huntington Beach, you are telling me and my community that we are not worth it, that we aren't welcome here because you actively deny us in deciding not to wave a flag. Displaying pride flags saves lives. Don't be afraid to acknowledge our humanity. Be afraid of the people who you expect the backlash from if you decide to wave it. That's where the hate is coming from. So I urge at least four of you to vote no on item 30. And vote yes on 32 for accessibility and having virtual council meetings again. Thank you.
Johnny Benitez, the social influencer for our City Councilwoman, Gracie Vandermark, admonished Gracie saying on Facebook, for the world to read, "Careful calling them out. They'll brand you a Nazi." And her answer back was, this is a screenshot, was, "I'm okay with that." So I'm not okay with that. I wouldn't want to be called a Nazi by anybody. But I'm not here today to talk about our resident Nazi. I'm here to talk about the more recent postings that we found. I'm just going to read it because it's Black History Month. And this is a month that's a serious matter for all of us. Slavery is horrible, regardless of what race, religion, color you are, what country you're from, whether it's sex slave today or race slave 200 years ago. It's horrible. So Gracie posted on Facebook, she was talking to an African-American woman, about an African-American woman. She said she should start by hating herself, then because it was blacks who started selling slaves to start with. That's a screenshot. Gracie further went on to say, "I say from now on, every time we hear a black person whining about how their great-great-great-granddaddy's great-granddaddy was a slave and the white people owe them, we remind them that the first slave owner was black," in capital letters. "And we should also remind them that white, in capital letters, people fought for them to be freed." The fact is, Native Americans and black folks fought for freedom in the Civil War. And the fact is, all kinds of people, mostly white folks from the South, owned slaves. So those are her own words. I have the actual unattributed quote from the first slave owner in the 1654-1655 case. And if anybody's interested, they can certainly get ahold of me, and I'll send it to them. So that's our City Councilwoman. Welcome to the Huntington Beach Real World. Mayor, bang your gavel. I still have the table up here, and I'll extend my time if you don't control your audience.
Mr.--
Bang your little gavel. Bang your little gavel and control your audience. You haven't done it much tonight, otherwise.
Sure I have. You haven't been here, then. But go ahead, please.
So is your audience under control? Okay, that concludes my comments. Have a nice day. Okay, members, now we're going to go to our Agenda. Council committee appointment announcements. Does any member have any announcements to make? Mr. Kalmak? No? I thought you pulled the mic. That's why, sorry. See none, we'll move on to the next item. AB 1234 reporting. Does any member have anything to report? Mr. Burns.
I attended the League of California Cities Academy for New Mayors and Councilmembers February 1st through 3rd.
Councilmember McKean?
Also attended the California League of Cities Orientation and Academy, and just want to thank the taxpayers for allowing us to go to that event. Thank you.
Mayor also attended that New Mayors and Council Meeting in Universal.
I also attended the New Mayors and Councilmembers Academy.
Any others? Nope? Okay, so now moving openness and negotiation disclosures. Does anyone have anything to disclose? Any members? Mr. Kalmak?
I had a conversation with the POA.
Okay. Anybody else? See none, we're moving on. City Managers report. City Manager Zalinka, please introduce your reports.
Briefly, Mayor, City Council, in the first part of January, we welcomed seven new team members to the City of Huntington Beach One HB Team. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Treasurer's report. City Treasurer Backstrom, please introduce your report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This report is typically given by the Investment Advisory Board. However, unfortunately, the members that were here had to leave, so I am going to provide the report for you if that is suitable to you.
We won't be taking role. We don't have a quorum, so--
Okay.
So the 2022 Annual Report, the Investment Advisory Board, was created to act in advisory capacity to the City Council and City Treasurer in matters pertaining to all of the city's investments. It is governed by the Municipal Code, Chapter 2.110, and is subject to the Open Meeting Law, Brown Act. The Investment Advisory Board consists of up to seven members. Each City Council member may appoint one member of the board to serve a concurrent term. In 2022, the members were as follows. Sean Hayman, appointed by Councilmember Dan Kalmak; Cindy Etardo, appointed by Councilmember Kim Carr; Scott Dowd, appointed by Councilmember Barbara Del Glaze; Mark Elliott, appointed by Councilmember Eric Peterson; Dennis Kelly, appointed by Councilmember Natalie Mosher; Rita Pitcher, appointed by Councilmember Mike Posey; and Monica Erskine, appointed by Councilmember Rhonda Bolton. For the 2022 Annual Report, the duties included review and make recommendations regarding the investment policy statement and the compliance, investment strategies and opportunities, relevant governmental regulation, and any information or questions or suggestions they may have on the quarterly investment reporting. They also prepare an annual report. And finally, to discuss their conclusions here, they found the City Treasurer managed funds with adherence to governmental regulations and the city's investment policy, and maintained the guideline and criteria of safety, liquidity, and a market rate of return. That is the conclusion of the Investment Advisory Board report. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Do you want to entertain a motion? I think it says receive and file.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
One sec. They moved in second. The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kalmak?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Aye.
Bolton? Out of the room. Burns. All right, so we have a 601. Councilmember Bolton, out of the room.
Okay, thank you. Next on the Agenda item, Members, City Clerk report. City Clerk, please introduce your report.
All right, I'm going to invite Kathy Shea up to-- Oh, great. We've got our-- I'm going to ask Daniel to put Kathy's presentation up on the screen. I'd like to introduce Kathy Shea, our city archivist. She's been sitting patiently back here through public--
And learning a lot, so thank you for having me. It is a real pleasure for me tonight, on behalf of the City Clerk's office, to announce that we have once again been awarded a very generous grant from California Revealed for the digitization of our wonderful old films. We have nearly 6,000 of them stored that were created by our Public Information Office for use by the city and for use by HPTV. California Revealed is an initiative of the California State Library System. And what they do is they seek to form partnerships with various nonprofits. They select the people that become their partners to help them digitize, preserve, and provide online access to these materials that wouldn't otherwise be available to them. Three and a half years ago, we applied for partnership, and we're selected, very happy of that. And each of the last three years, they have accepted every single item we've asked them to do. So part of our great news tonight is that we have just been made available our Year Three awards, and it's about 70 films. And bear in mind that we could not even watch these. The stuff is obsolete if it were not for the generosity of the state of California. These films span the early 1970s to the very early 1990s and cover every topic you can possibly imagine, from the construction of the Surf Museum to any kind of event you can imagine, Fourth of July parades, all these wonderful things. This year, we submitted a bunch of stuff, Harbor Boat Parade films that we dredged up and found. And those are going to be something really different. And with this next round that they've agreed to fund, we will now have made available every moving image we have on the American Trader oil spill, which is very important to our history and our story. Daniel? You've got the clicker. One of the really, really important things about this is not only do we get the access to this material to use it, and the cost that is totally free to us, by the way, the only thing we pay for is to FedEx the films to Sacramento, that's it. So far, last year, it cost us a hundred bucks for those 70 films. So then not only is the value in the digitization of the materials, which would be fairly costly because they are in obsolete formats, the really probably most valuable thing fiscally to us is the hosting platforms. These are hosted on four different platforms, publicly, totally, cost-free to us. They are maintained by these organizations, and they range from really just popular use opportunities here, California Revealed's own website, all the way up through the Internet Archive, and then as we get more and more into really more scholarly uses, the Digital Public Library of America, and the Calisphere Program at the University of California. Daniel? So in terms of the outreach, we know that hundreds of people almost immediately look at these things, and we have metrics from all of those various platforms. And we do know that totaling them all up, we have thousands. And we know from Cal Revealed people themselves that they are from all over the world, that pay attention, that they're fascinated by what we do, they like to do our city, they like our beach, they like our pier, they like our events. And there are scholars, for instance, out there that do nothing but work on research, the history of the Fourth of July parades in America, and you can imagine we're a big hit there. We have, through Cal Revealed, had inquiries, and our material's been used by major media outlets, including ABC Fremantle, we recently did another piece through NBC. And because of our relationship with Cal Revealed and the success we have had as one of their partners, I've had the opportunity to present on three national conferences about this, representing our city, and of course, all of this comes back credit to the city of Huntington Beach. The last publication I was asked to be in was Society of American Archivists, and it's the National Scholarly Journal of that Board. So with that, I would like to conclude with a little composite minute-long clip of what is probably my favorite series of the whole shebang, and that is the pier. And this is basically the end of the old pier, and its demolition, and then the construction of the new one. So this, what you'll next see is a one-minute composite clip of the last day of the old pier. This was a huge event, people all over, it just filled the pier. Look at the size of those waves. You can hear them cheering because the pier is actually going up and down. And then the videographer realizes something's not right, things are coming apart, and he zooms in on shattered bolts and hooks, and then pulls back a little bit from this excitement. Brave videographer had a really good zoom lens, one or the other. And you can see now the whole thing is starting to go, and they wisely decide to move people off the pier. Good move, because here is the first of the pilings floating free. That's the cafe for the truck for the end cafe, and you can see it, them wisely driving it off the pier. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a taste of some of the fun things that we have. Better films and more films are to come. So thank you very much for this opportunity to do this on behalf of our city, and thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Thank. Thanks for all your hard work and all the team's hard work. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
So members, next on the...
Mr. Mayor, did we do number nine, the treasurer's?
I was just going to mention that.
Thought we did. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have one more item on the treasurer's.
Number nine, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Lisa.
City treasurer's December 2022 quarterly investment summary report. Thanks, councilman. I missed on the agenda.
Well, it's hard to follow that, especially with investment information, but here we go. Thank you for the opportunity to present the City Treasurer's quarterly investment report for the period ended December 31st. As of December 31st, the market value of the city's investment portfolio was approximately 308.7 million with a book value of 325.4 million. As you might know, bond interest rates and prices move inversely, so as interest rates go up, as they have been recently, the prices of the bonds purchased at the previous lower rates go down. So it is this concept that explains why the current market value of the portfolio is lower than the book value. But not to worry, the city's portfolio is typically what is referred to as a buy-and-hold portfolio, meaning except in very specific circumstances, bonds are held to maturity, and the city receives back the amount purchased, so there are no losses. So the market value is just a measure at a point in time of the value in the market. If you were to sell all the securities in the portfolio at a point in time, which of course we wouldn't do. So as for the investments held in the city's portfolio, they are governed by the California State Code and the city's investment policy. You can find more information about each investment type and the allowable percentages in the city's investment policy, which is on the city's website under City Treasurer Investments. As of December 31st, the portfolio was invested in the following security types and percentages: federal agencies, which consist of bonds of Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Farm Credit Bank, and Federal Home Loan Bank at 45%, U.S. Treasuries at approximately 26%, corporate bonds A-rated and above at 12%, super nationals, which are organizations formed by a group of countries to promote economic development in developing countries, all of which whose bonds are AAA rated at approximately 9%, 6% in the California Asset Management, or CAMP, account, which is a pooled account for California agencies with overnight liquidity, and it is allowable per the state code and has a AAA rating, and approximately 1% in short-term commercial paper of the highest rating. Over the quarter, the Federal Reserve continued to raise rates, and when funds became available, we invested into higher yielding options. The liquidity funds were moved into the CAMP account, which has a current seven-day yield of 4.66%. As well, 8 million was invested in federal agencies. A 5 million Bristol-Myers Squibb 3.5-year bond was purchased, which is A-plus rated. 5 million in short-term commercial paper was purchased, and 8 million in U.S. Treasuries. You can find the detail of all these purchases on the City Treasurer's website under the investment reports, and you can look at the report specifically for this period. Earnings for the month of December were 462,046,000, an increase of approximately 77% from the same month in the prior year. This is due primarily to the rising interest rates. Fiscal year-to-date earnings of approximately 2.2 million were up 43% from the previous fiscal year, again due to the interest rate increases. The effective rate of return for December was 1.74% with a fiscal year-to-date return of 1.44%. The increase in the December rate of return over that of the fiscal year-to-date return is a result of the portfolio investing in the higher rates available every month. So this is moving in the right direction. The benchmark has also increased rapidly with the sharp rise in interest rates during 2022. At the end of December, the 12-month moving average of the interpolated 1.5-year Treasury was 2.84%. This was up a whole percentage point from the prior quarter, so that rose dramatically. The portfolio return will lag the benchmark, as it will take time for the previously purchased securities to mature and then funds to be reinvested. However, it should be remembered, per the state code, the primary objective of public fund investing are safety and liquidity, followed by the market rate of return. So to provide context on my previous comment about the benchmark rate rising so quickly, as you can see by this chart, interest rates rose rapidly over 2022 due to the Federal Reserve raising the discount rate, especially on the short end. This is showing you the two and the five-year treasuries. For example, the two-year Treasury rate at the end of 2021 was 0.73% versus one year later, at the end of last year, 4.41%. So that's a 504% increase in just one year. The higher rates, though, do offer the portfolio the opportunity to earn more interest as funds become available and we can invest. This is a chart of selected investment policy compliance requirements as of 12/31/22, and the city's investment portfolio remained in compliance with all relevant state codes and the city's investment policy with no exceptions. So to summarize, the treasurer's objectives are to ensure safety of principal, and there have been no unplanned losses, to provide for sufficient liquidity, to meet the needs of the city and its operations, and thirdly, to provide for a market rate of return through economic and budgetary cycles. The portfolio had an upward trending return of 1.74% for December and 1.44% for fiscal year-to-date. All of these objectives were met. Additionally, the portfolio has been a positive contributor to the city with earnings of 2.23 million fiscal year-to-date, which are used towards city operations. This concludes my report, and I am open for questions.
Members, any questions? Seeing none, I would like to move to receive and file the city's treasurer quarterly investment report for December 2022 pursuant to Section 17.0 of the investment policy of the city of Huntington Beach.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kalmyk.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Seven, zero, thank you.
Thank you. Now, members, we're moving the consent calendar. It's items 11 through 23. Does anyone like to pull an item?
I'll pull 11 and 12, please.
Thirteen?
Kalmyk, 11 and 12.
Is it 13?
Mosher, 13. Any others?
I'll move the balance.
Say that again?
I'll move the balance.
Okay. The balance has been moved. It's been seconded. Clerk, please call the roll. So clerk, for clarification, we're pulling 11, 12, and 13 from the consent.
Yes.
So we're now moving 14 through 23.
Very good.
But 15 has been pulled from the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's been moved from the agenda.
Great.
All right, so Councilmember Kalmyk.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Items 14 through 23, excluding 15 past seven, zero.
Great. Okay, members, now we're going to item number 11. Mr. Kalmyk.
Thank you. I just wanted to, again, request that we potentially table this item on second reading to gain more analysis and context for raising campaign contribution rates in the context of other cities. Again, I still don't know if it's 4,900 or 5,500. I've heard.
It's 5,500, but...
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to table the item tonight.
I would like to make a substitute motion that we adopt item number 11. This is an item that I authored. This is the third time we've discussed it. We voted 4-3 each time. You know, the arguments are very simple. You're not taking money out of politics, but the money's coming in from outside groups, and it limits the ability to fight back. And this will also ensure less negative campaigning, because it can't spend the money not to outside groups. So I do a substitute motion that we pass. Item number 11 is as.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kalmyk.
No.
Mosher.
No.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
No.
Burns.
Aye.
The item passes four, three.
The Mosher passes four, three. Members, we're now on file item number 12. Mr. Kalmyk.
Thank you. In between last meeting and this meeting, an edge case was brought to my attention that I wanted to at least address with the council potentially tonight to make a small amendment and then potentially bring this back at the next meeting for a second reading. Someone's posited the aspect that they were talking with code enforcement and illegal cannabis shops popping up in town. And based on the way this reads, in addition to the fact that we don't define the word business in our code anywhere, makes this a little squishy. So I thought it would be prudent to potentially add in as part of the exemptions section in the first, the end of the first paragraph, that businesses operating not in compliance with the Huntington Beach zoning code or land use controls be exempt from anonymous reporting to code enforcement, primarily because if you have a cannabis shop that's illegal that pops up, and you've got to go in and show your I D, the cartel's running it, now you're being murdered. So I think it creates a real public safety issue for businesses operating illegally in the city, but still meets the goals of the original intent, which is legitimate businesses that are potentially being targeted by folks anonymously. So I would like to see if, I don't know if we need to put the brakes on this one and ask the city attorney for some clarification on how we could kind of nuance that a bit. But I do have a worry that this is going to assign me some public safety issues with illegal businesses in town, because we don't defy business in the city. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just inquiry, wouldn't, illegal business wouldn't have a parade or stand on. So it wouldn't fall under this at all anyways, an illegal one. Illegal is illegal, and we can do what we can do.
How do you report it, though, is the question? If you have to go into city, if I call and say there's an illegal cannabis shop next to me, the code reads that I'd have to come down to City Hall and make a notified identification, a public record that I'm the one that complained that there's an illegal cartel-run cannabis shop next door.
City attorney, would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, illegal businesses are illegal under state law. So in keeping with sort of what the purpose of the H item is and the plain language of the ordinance, if somebody's going to complain to code enforcement about a state law violation, whether it's a violation of A B C license, or whether it's a felony criminal issue, or an illegal business, those state law complaints can be lodged anonymously.
Okay, so knowing that, Mr. Kalmyk, I would like to work with you on the definition of businesses in the code, because it's something that you researched that I think we do need to look at, so I'm looking forward to working with you. But under, after advice from the city attorney, I would like to move item number 12 as is.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kalmyk.
No.
Mosher.
No.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
No.
Burns.
Yes.
The item passes four, three.
Okay, members, now we're on item number 13. Councilmember Mosher, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you so much. With regarding of approval and adoption of the minutes, I did have a proposed change for page 14 of 23. Let's see, paragraph four, the first two lines. The first line indicates Mayor Strickland confirmed that traditionally the county has been responsible to address homeless issues, and it should be included here, and stated Huntington Beach has spent 20 million. Instead, it doesn't have the word stated, so it looks as though it's confirmed, and it wasn't confirmed. So it's just adding stated in front of Huntington Beach. Again, that was page 14, paragraph four, line two, adding stated in front of Huntington Beach.
Thank you, councilwoman. In fact, I thought the number was 25 million, but...
The number was not confirmed as...
No number was actually confirmed. You're correct.
Correct, and I'm pretty sure that it's not necessarily that, but we will be getting that information back for the study session.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So I make a motion that we add stated there, and that's it.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, to approve the item as amended by Councilmember Mosher, Councilmember Kalmyk.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Passes seven, zero.
All right, let's move on. Now we're into item number 24. Director Luna, is there a staff report?
Yes, give us one moment, please. Mayor, while we get our senior planner, Kaden Betman, up to the seat to present this item.
Thank you, Ursula. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and fellow council members. Tonight, this item is zoning text amendment number 22004. And this represents a request to amend the Beach Edinger corridor-specific plan in a manner that would allow medical services on the ground floor within a specific segment. That's the Neighborhood Center segment. And as the text currently reads in the specific plan, all medical services uses are limited to the above-ground floor, and I'll be specific in how that reads in the document shortly. Currently, the Neighborhood Center segment takes, is established over six zoning segments within the Beach Edinger corridor-specific plan. It's a total of 35 properties that are currently developed with commercial uses, and it also currently includes Ocean Plaza, which is circled here. It includes Beach Promenade, the Newland Center, and also the Walmart Center. These are snapshots of the existing specific plan, where you can see highlighted on the right under special conditions is C2, which is a specific requirement for an upper-floor location, and medical services, which is highlighted on the left. The Beach Edinger corridor-specific plan intends to provide neighborhood-serving commercial uses on the ground floor. In this segment, that includes retail, restaurant, and personal service businesses. Additionally, office and residential uses are permitted on the upper floors. So while the intent of this segment of the specific plan was to feature traditional ground-level commercial uses, demand for these uses has diminished over the years due to the rise of e-commerce and some impacts from previous COVID restrictions. Demand for traditional medical services, however, has increased and is vital for an aging community. Thus, citywide, medical services are permitted by right because they do not require any special operational conditions in order to find the use compatible with the surrounding community or to avoid impacts with adjacent tenants and businesses. Medical and dental office uses are commonly found on the ground floor in most other commercial areas, where they often fill underutilized commercial space and contribute to activating the pedestrian environment of those commercial properties. Thus, the recommendation stems from a January 10th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, where at a public hearing, they voted to recommend approval of this request to the city council based on the following, that it is consistent with the general plan. It addresses a community need for health and wellness by expanding access to medical services. It is consistent with other commercially-zoned areas and could facilitate the establishment of new businesses and job creation. That concludes staff report, and we're present for any questions.
Mayor Strickland, if I may just add, at the Planning Commission hearing, the applicant actually spoke on behalf of the project and made some very compelling arguments. I understand the applicant isn't here today, but I thought it might be useful information. And it was mentioned that this retail site was, has been in existence for about five years and has had a high vacancy rate. It has one of the highest traffic counts in the city for intersections, so it's not that it's not viable for retail from that standpoint, but as mentioned, due to e-commerce, et cetera, they've had a really hard time filling this center, and that the actual applicant is a local couple that want to open a pediatric dentistry and orthodontics office, and that they do not intend, they hope that that will help them attract additional retail to this site. So I just wanted to add those comments. Thank you.
Members, do you have any questions?
Do we have to do ex parte? Do we have ex parte disclosures? I have none, but...
Yes, if there were any.
Okay. Usually get the opportunity to. I don't have any, but somebody else may have talked to somebody.
I just want to say this is the industry that I work in, is commercial real estate in the retail sector, and retail's always evolving, and medical tenants do very well at retail centers. So this encourages that use, and it's a local small-business owner, so I make a motion to move this item.
Excuse me, before we do that, technically you have to open up the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. So any more question, councilmember questions? Seeing none, then, city clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this item?
Are you opening the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, no, we have no one signed to speak.
Okay, now we go back to councilman McKeon.
I make a motion to move the item.
I'll second it.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kalmyk.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Thank you.
And can we please just confirm for the record that the public hearing has been closed?
Public hearing has been closed. I thought I said that, but I apologize if I didn't. Next item, members, we're on item number 25. It's an administrative item. Who's presenting on that? Public hearing has been closed. I thought I said that, but I apologize if I didn't. Next item, members, we're on item number 25. It's an administrative item. Who's presenting on that?
Thank you, Mayor Strickland. I'll be presenting on that tonight. Good evening, Mayor Strickland and city council members. Tonight's item before you is, Daniel, do you want to pull that up? Oh, there we go, is regarding a contract amendment to an ongoing public art project in Huntington Central Park. So before we discuss the actual contract amendment, I'll just go through a little bit of the timeline briefly to kind of talk about how we got here tonight. So back in the fall of 2019, staff conducted an online community feedback survey, and a lot of the results that we got showed that people wanted to see public art in parks. And specifically, some of that feedback said in Huntington Central Park. So then in September, on September 7, 2020, city council authorized Mayor Lyman Sometta, at the time, to appoint an ad hoc Huntington Central Park Public Art Committee to help develop a scope of services for requests for proposals, and ultimately come back and recommend an artist for final selection for that project. The committee was then and is now comprised of two council members, three community members, and two staff. So following that, the staff worked with the committee to conduct an RFP process, and there were 11 artists that responded. And the top five ranking artists were invited to participate in some interviews conducted by the committee. RDG was ultimately unanimously recommended by the committee with over 80 large-scale projects in the U.S. and Canada. And then on December 7 of 2020, city council unanimously authorized the execution of a professional services agreement with RDG with a not-to-exceed limit of $300,000 for the project. And this amount was appropriated from Restricted Public Art in Parks Fund 236, and I'll go a little bit more into that later in the presentation. So during the winter of 2021, as part of that contract, RDG conducted some community outreach with a virtual town hall and survey to collect feedback from residents and stakeholders about their vision for what this art piece could be, and ultimately how they sort of used and interacted with Huntington Central Park. And so some of the stakeholders involved, local arts groups that we've worked with in the past, and a lot of the groups, as you see listed there, that volunteer and interact with us in Central Park just about every day. And so then in July 6 to 2021, as recommended by the Design Review Board, on June 10 of 2021, city council unanimously approved the site location and design of the artwork, with the direction that this would be an iconic public artwork that's original, that's community and artist-driven, and harmonizes with the respect of the unique architecture of the nearby Central Library and the aesthetic of Central Park. And so this is the location that was approved. You can see the yellow circle there is where the art is to be installed, just sort of to the east of the Secret Garden there and north of Huntington Central Library. And just a couple renderings from the original approval. You can see the two pillars there that stand, that will stand in that location. Both of these pillars have been fabricated, and so this amendment tonight is going to help us hopefully install those and complete the project. And here's a view at night with some of the lighting that's included as well. So regarding the contract amendment details, the original scope that was approved included decomposed granite surface to actually access to and around the art features. And since then, as the project developed, staff has determined actually that the base surface should not be decomposed granite and should be asphalt, mainly because of the accessibility of the asphalt. But staff and RDG also mutually agreed that changing the scope to asphalt would not only ensure accessibility, but would require less maintenance over time and better blends with the existing pathway that's already there. So in order to do this, there needs to be some metal frames that are designed and installed to encase the base of those pillars, to protect it from the asphalt during installation, then over time creates sort of a barrier between the asphalt and the pieces of art in case for any reason there's any maintenance or any removal needed down the line. So should that be approved following the installation of the pillars? The next steps would be to pour the asphalt, and the contract amendment does specify that once the pillars are installed, that any damage that would be caused to the pillars during the next steps would be the responsibility of the city. So other than the additional amount of funds that's needed, that's the other part of the contract amendment that would be needed as well. And just to clarify with the funding, so the funding for tonight's item, the amount of $35,000, is currently available in the Public Arts in Parks Fund 236. So the estimate from RDG is $29,246 for the design, fabrication, and installation of the protective metal. And then staff is recommending the additional $5,754 for contingency in case there should be any need for that to complete the project. And then again, with Fund 236, just for your information, it is comprised of 2% of residential park development impact fees that are collected for new developments, specifically restricted for funding public art in parks projects. And just a little more information there, that was established in July of 2012 and is included in HB Municipal Code 17.76.090.8.2, which states 2% of the fee collected shall be used to fund public art in city parks. So tonight's recommended action is to approve the contract amendment and also to authorize the appropriation of the $35,000 from the Public Art in Parks Funds 236.
Any questions from the members?
I have some comments.
Councilmember McKeon.
Yeah. So this one's very frustrating to me because we've already spent so much money getting to this point, and in order to finish it, we're essentially being forced to approve this budget overrun. So I think this is an opportunity to essentially establish systems and procedures going forward, to properly ascertain all the details and due diligence items of projects upfront to ensure this doesn't happen again. Again, I'm in real estate and development, so how do we not account for ADA compliance? That is one of the first due diligence items you ensure your project accounts for. And now this has led to an 11% budget overrun and essentially takes away from other art projects. So my question is, A, is there any way to trim up this budget overrun? You know, can we use decomposed granite instead of asphalt? And then there's also an issue where now the city takes on the liability of this cost overrun and this project. So there's no liability on the artists who are consulting going forward. So it seems like they're getting it both ways. So I just would hope that we can come up with better systems and procedures to ensure this doesn't happen again, to get some tighter reins on our projects and costs, et cetera. Those are my comments.
Any other comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, is there a wish of...
What is the balance in that fund? I was just curious, if we don't have it.
I don't have it. I'm happy to get back to you on that one. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
That's okay. That's okay. Thank you. And it's always good to have good checks and balances. I know that our staff attempts to do that. I do believe it was the DG, though, that we couldn't have. It has to be asphalt, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the liability being transferred, is that really as a result of the fact that they're adding the asphalt around the artwork? So you have to put some metal around it, was that correct?
Yes. Yeah. So the artists would install those pillars and then, and the metal encasing around it. So either way, once the project is finished, the city obviously resumes full liability for all of it.
Got it. Thank you so much. And I'm really excited to be able to get this public art finally up in the park, and I know everybody else is really excited about it, too. So I'm definitely, would like to make a motion if it wasn't already made.
It has been made.
Okay.
It's been moved?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
I just wanted to mention that some supplemental communication came forward to make a few corrections in the report. So it'll be approved as amended by that. Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Not voting.
Did you... Okay. McKeon?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Present.
All right. The item passes 5-0-2. Thank you.
All right, members, we're moving on. File item number 26, Chief Parra, please introduce your item.
So this is a report back on crime statistics involving Huntington Beach businesses and recommendations to enhance efforts to address and reduce business-related crimes. And Captain Oscar Garcia is going to provide the presentation.
Good evening.
Captain, thank you.
We'll start with the shoplifting data from 2022. As you can see, there was a total of 669 incidents of shoplifting. Of those 669, 208, 31%, we made an arrest. 67% of 451 is a non-suspect, meaning the crime happened, by the time we got there, suspect fled, we weren't able to identify him. We broke it down by area command. As you know, the department broke up the city into quadrants, northeast, northwest, southwest, southeast, and downtown. We have a lieutenant in charge of each area command, and they manage what occurs in that area and provide proactive patrols accordingly. In regards to robberies, we had a total of 106 robberies. Thirty-seven of them, we identified them as STS robbery. STS robbery is when a suspect enters, let's say, a 7-Eleven, they're going to do a beer run, they get confronted by the clerk, or loss prevention, they push him, it becomes a felony, we call that a STS robbery. Of all total robberies, we had 37 that were identified as STS. Sixty-nine were traditional robberies committed at gunpoint. Again, broken down, the STS robberies broke down, we arrested 18 of them, but 15 or 40% were a non-suspect again. In regards to vandalism, looking at the businesses, we had 363 where the business was the victim. That could be tagging, could also be doing the commission of a shoplifting, they damaged something in the business. Again, we made arrests on 24%, but 76% were unknown suspects or no arrests made. In regards to enforcement, as we look in the future, we're... The first one, the two additional officers for night detectives, that's what we want to do, is add detectives that would address the quality of life issues or incidents involving businesses. We will come back later on, once we get our staffing to appropriate levels. But what we're looking at is adding...
You can still proceed to talk about it without that.
Yeah. So what we're trying to do, one of the things we want to look is look at technology. Obviously, that's the implementation of adding 25 public safety cameras over a five-year span, five cameras per year. We would divide it by the area commands, which areas have been affected the most. That will help in identification of the suspects and apprehension of suspects. We will also start adding more proactive patrol, which will be coordinated by the area commander. That would include one lieutenant, one sergeant, and four officers that will be targeting areas that have been hit harder by this type of crimes. We will be coordinated with the Special Investigation Bureau, our undercover units, to conduct bait merchandise operation as well as parking lot operations. A lot of times during the summer months, our vehicle burglaries go up, we will be doing undercover operations. Our future goal would be to request two additional officers to the police department. That will be done once our staffing levels become adequate. And that would be adding two detectives, we classify as night detectives, that will be able to assist when one of these calls come out to identify the suspects and probably charge felony charges, right in the misdemeanor charges. As we break down the cost, adding five cameras per year for the next five years, it would be about $50,000, $10,000 per camera. The goal will be to have 25 additional public safety cameras in five years. We will also request 40 overtime hours for the area commands. That's broken down by each area command, which will include one lieutenant, one sergeant, and four officers. That's it.
Thank you, members. Do we have any questions? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Captain Garcia. Just a quick question about metrics. So will you establish some type of metric to help us understand how effective the program is once you get everything up and running?
Yes. As you can see, some of my slides, you can see the, most of the suspects are known. That could be because when the call comes up, by the time the officers get there, the suspect is gone. The public safety cameras, that's how we'll be able to measure, has been proven, that's how we use technology, has been proven to the identification. We will be able to see more increase in apprehension or at least identification of the suspects.
Any other questions? Councilman?
Thank you so much for your presentation. So a couple things. One, I appreciate the data that's here from this recent time period. However, there's no context and analysis with regards to year-over-year comparisons, so I wouldn't be able to tell necessarily if even shoplifting had gone down versus up, and how we should respond. And although it was requested during our initial discussion of the item about a broader regional context and comparison, that wasn't provided. However, I know I did receive earlier this afternoon that type of data, and I think that that is the type of information that we'd want presented for us to be able to make the decisions here, have a more evidence-based decision based upon that analysis, and also to be able to present to the broader public as well. And I think that it would really better support us making a proper decision here and also deciding on, you know, spending these funds. So personally, I think that we should table the item until we get that data to be able to present. We likely will end up in the same place, but I think it's important to be able to make the decision based upon the year-over-year trends. And that's my motion really, is to table it.
Is there a second? There's no second to the motion. So let's move on. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sorry, Mayor, I'd like to, once we do that, we'll have a little discussion on the motion in a second. I just have a comment. Yeah. So, yeah, I think, while I do appreciate Councilmember Mosher's motion to collect the data, I think that we can do two things at once here. And so I think that as part of the approval of the plan, and as part of the original motion is to continue to report on crime statistics, would be to bring back the contextual standpoint here, because I think the cameras overall, obviously, are not going to stop crime, they're going to help solve crimes. And obviously, having some more overtime to be able to take it after some of those robbery issues that we've been having, I think will be very helpful. So, yeah, so I think that if we can make sure that that contextual data, to see the trend line start to move, and then an estimate of when we can look at that, right, because we can't look next month and say, okay, we've solved it. So kind of an idea of when we would, if we were to expect to see change by more cameras and officers, to see some metric change. And if nothing changes, then obviously we want to shift gears, or if we just level it out, right, then we've had an impact. But if we start to see it go up, or we can really feel that the cameras weren't helpful, I mean, London is the most CCTV camera city in the world, and their crime is just as big as any other major metropolitan city. So, and their solving statistics are about the same. So, you know, I am hesitant for the privacy issues involved with cameras because we, there's a larger conversation that we have not had yet on the privacy issues, how long we retain the data, things like that, that I think we probably want to get into at some point in the future. But I'd also like to see some of this stuff come back through budget process as well, because, again, we've spent a bunch of money in the last couple of months without really a budgetary context. So, thank you.
Madam Clerk has been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
That's correct. Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Members, we're now on file item number 27. Police Chief Parra, please introduce your item.
So this is an item to, stand by one while I pull this up. It's to introduce ordinance number 4275 to amend Huntington Beach Municipal Code Chapter 13.08.070 relating to dogs and other animals on the beach. So as it's written, the current code does not provide an exemption for Huntington Beach Police Department horses or animals, which are regularly used during our enforcement actions and during parades and events endowed at the beach. And it doesn't provide the ability for special events, special events to occur with the use of animals on the beach. So with an exemption... legally have our animals down at the beach. So it's just asking for that mini-code amendment.
Any questions by the members? Seeing that I would like to move the item.
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Kelmick. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
I'd like to read for the record the title of ordinance number 4275, an ordinance of the City of Huntington Beach, amending Chapter 13.08 of the Huntington Beach Municipal Code relating to dogs and other animals.
Thank you. Members, now we're, you didn't announce the vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Members, we're now moving on. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine polled from the agenda. We're now on item number 30. Councilman Burns, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes. We, the City of Huntington Beach, are one community with many different cultures and people. All are appreciated and valued members of our community, and none are to be treated differently or discriminated against. As a city, government, and municipal organization, the City of Huntington Beach should promote unity. In keeping with the proper role of municipal government and in the spirit of true unity, the City of Huntington Beach should only fly or display on public property the American flag, POW MIA flag, the California flag, the County of Orange flag, and the City of Huntington Beach flag. I'd like to amend that to also include the six branches of our armed forces on occasion, not, not on a regular basis, but when requested by certain government officials. So my recommendation is direct the city manager to work with the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for presentation at the next regular council meeting that the city only fly or display on public property or at any of its facilities the American flag, the POW MIA flag, the California flag, the County of Orange flag, and the Huntington Beach flag, with the amendment of adding the six branches of our armed forces flags on occasion.
All right. Is there items, members who want to speak? Mr. Kelmick?
I'll start. So I was one of the original councilmembers that brought this item forward in 2021. We had a handful of speakers. We were the 13th or 14th city in the county to fly the flag. We were not out in front on this. We had a nice little event when we did it the first time, and when we flew it in 2022, two emails, maybe, wasn't an issue. The Boston decision, when we decided to fly the flag, the second item for that was to create a flag policy. And the City of Boston solved that problem for us and got the, which rarely happens, was a direction for how this could be legal. Oh, I'll wait.
Who's this at?
Oh, sorry. So the City of Boston ruling gave us a direction. So we, a couple of months ago, passed a flag policy. And that flag policy basically gives council the opportunity to decide whatever flag they want to fly. And currently, as the previous resolution was from Harvey Milk Day to the end of June, the City of Huntington Beach flies the pride flag, and the US flag, the state flag, and the city flag all fly as necessary. As former Mayor Boardman pointed out, this current, creating this as an ordinance removes our ability as a council to make decisions, which is what we're elected to do. This is government speech, and the government, it's up to this board to decide what flags we fly as government speech. This would preclude us from flying the Olympic flag in 2028 without amending an ordinance, which would require two meetings in advance in order to do that. Again, the, our sister city flags, when Australia was here for the Special Olympics team, I believe we did fly the Australian flag for them. There's been countless other times where flags are important. And the fact that we're amending this item to include our six branches of the military, which I'm assuming are the Navy, the Army, the Marines, the Air Force, Space Force, and the Coast Guard? Okay. But again, that changed, you know, if we had passed this six years ago, we would have had to come back and amend the ordinance to add Space Force. So, I mean, I mean that in earnest, that we already have the ability to fly these flags, and I think it just comes down to, if you don't want to fly the pride flag, just make a motion tonight to change, and by fiat, because our board, any minute action we take becomes officially a resolution to eliminate the resolution that the previous council to fly the pride flag and keep the existing framework in place, which we know has passed this constitutional muster, and allows us, as needed, to fly the armed forces flag, to fly the POW flag, and to fly any other flag we need to, as needed, based on community input. But some of the arguments of, oh, I want to, folks want to submit flags to be flown, no, it's this board that decides what flags are flown under the current policy. So I don't think we need this. I think we can just not take any action on this tonight, and, or if Mr. Burns, so, make a motion to go ahead and suspend flying the pride flag in Huntington Beach. I think that the PR disaster for that would be horrible for the city. I think that the fact that we saw some folks complain about, the people were speaking that weren't from the city, we have 11 million tourists coming to the city every year, and we want them to feel comfortable in our city. This feels like we're adding extra bureaucracy, and we're jumping through so many hoops to go back to 2003. So, again, I would say that we were not in the forefront of doing this. You know, it was one of the earlier things we did when I got on council, to show inclusion in our community, show folks that we're safe for a group of folks that have been marginalized throughout history. And I think that this is, I mean, this seems, it seems like we're having a conversation from 20 years ago in 2023. And I just, I just don't think it's something that we need, especially as being a tourist city that we are, and a city that has residents that know folks in the community, are their allies in the community or are part of the community. And notice that there's a theme there of community. And I think that identifying folks for, from Harvey Milk Day, so, you know, under 45 days under the plan that's currently implemented, doesn't discriminate. It just shows that the city is open and welcoming to a group of people that are not normally recognized and haven't been recognized in this country, and in other parts of this country are still not recognized and can be fired for who they love and who they live with, can be discriminated against. California has strong laws that prevent that, but there's still not parity across this country. And so us saying that, welcome to Huntington Beach, and come spend your money here and come live here, I think is, is an important sign for the city. And so I just think that if we don't want to fly the pride flag, let's come out and say it. I think we should fly the pride flag, but I don't think we need to create additional government in order to take that point. Thank you.
Councilman? No? I'm just going to do this one.
Sure. Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Kelmick, for originally bringing the pride flag item forward with Mayor Carr at the time, and for all that you've said just now. I too think that there's no need to change the policy as it's already there and add additional bureaucracy. Clerk, are you able to report on those, on the number of those who were against or for item 30?
I do have that information up to about 2:00. Anything that came in after that, I'm not sure are in these numbers, but we had approximately 275 email communications, 228 of which were in opposition to the item, and 46 in support. But again, after 2:00, we don't have those numbers.
And Madam Clerk, do you have that information of who's from Huntington Beach and who's outside of Huntington Beach?
Not to that level, no.
That would be important to hear, too.
Or I guess who visits Huntington Beach or does work in Huntington Beach as well. So I guess the question for me is, you know, who are we? And what is our message? What is our story? What is the story that we're trying to tell in Huntington Beach? We are Surf City, we heard this tonight. We are home. We are a tourist destination. We are a place where large events take place and draw millions of people. We are many things. We are our stories. Some of those stories, as we also heard tonight, are not so shiny and bright. In fact, some of them are quite dark. We are the way that we make people feel when they come here. We are a community. We are, on our best days, one HB. On those best days, we are a welcoming and inclusive city. And on that day when we first raised that pride flag, that is how we all felt, that we're there that day. In the last few years, I believe we have been reframing and recreating the stories, this narrative of Huntington Beach. Many residents, as can be seen by those numbers and those people speaking here today, have been proud of the recent direction, of the changing of that narrative, that perhaps we're not the Florida of California. This great welcoming has been evidenced by the Vans US Open taking place here, having their pride flags up on the top of their bleachers, talks about hosting events for the 2028 Olympics. We have made progress. We have moved forward. We have made many, including myself, proud to live, to do business, to start businesses, and to visit here. As the gentleman mentioned earlier, look how far we've come. This agenda item, this proposal halts that progress. It stops it. Councilmember Burns stated in his item, "The City of Huntington Beach should avoid actions that could easily or mistakenly be perceived as divisive." If he believed that, he would not have proposed this regressive item. A flag functions as a message, and so does its removal. Dr. Richard Harrison, our Library and Community Services Commissioner, asked earlier, "What message does it send to take that symbol of hope away?" The unprompted removal of the pride flag sends a petty and unnecessary message. It makes people believe that those unsavory stories about Huntington Beach, and it proliferates our bad reputation. It makes us look like the city that everybody expects us to be. I don't believe that we are that city. I believe that we are better than that. I see it every day. The pride flag is a symbol of inclusion. The rainbow has been a symbol of hope and promise for a better future. Flying the flag is not woke, but instead is welcoming. I know that our participation in the Olympics is important for many of you, and did you know that the IOC has said, "Gender equality, inclusion, and diversity are fundamental principles of Olympism, and the Olympic Charter is central to fulfilling the IOC's and the Olympic movement's vision of building a better world through sport." What if this decision, if it goes wrong tonight, would negatively impact our chances of hosting? Would that matter to you? Public safety. Mayor Strickland, this past Saturday morning, mentioned at Officer Vella's event, that public safety is the most important job of government. If you believe that, and you have the power to make people feel safe, is it not your, is it not our obligation to do so? Will this action make people feel less safe? Who is the flag hurting? Former Mayor Detloff talked about our human dignity statement that's been reaffirmed by every council. I'm curious whether this council would be able to do that, considering it talks about that affirmation in support of those of different sexualities, genders, LGBTQ, and on. I recently hosted a scout troop here that asked me what we were doing to protect LGBTQ youth in the community, and what I said to them that afternoon was that we had raised the pride flag, we had our human relations committee, and we were trying to do so much more. What will I be able to tell them now? I believe we've been getting this right, we've been making progress, but I believe that this is a great unraveling of our community. We've been hosting our community dialogues with the community cafes called Hello Neighbor, and, you know, earlier tonight, it was also mentioned that we're all neighbors here, and I think we should act that way. Open up the space, be more welcoming, and be more inclusive. My final part on this, what an honor it is, what a privilege it is to be able to stand here, sit here, and speak about what's right, to be able to have that opportunity to honor people's stories, their testimonies, and to be able to help create a welcoming space in the city that I have grown up in my entire life. I would like to say to all of you, you are welcome here. You are valued, and you are important, regardless of what happens tonight. Also, as someone who's an idol to me, John Lewis, our former congressman, he had said that we need to act as if the brilliant and beautiful future that we envision already exists. And so if we do that, whatever decision that's made tonight, it doesn't matter, because we know sometime in the future, this world that's more inclusive and more welcoming will exist, does exist, and we are all making that happen tonight, regardless of the outcome of this decision. And I hope we're able to say again someday, look how far we've come.
Councilman McKean?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, by definition, inclusion represents everyone equally, as an American, a resident of California, a resident of Orange County, a resident of Huntington Beach, and of course, pays homage to the veterans who have paid the ultimate sacrifice to allow us to enjoy the freedoms the United States provides. And any other flag listed on this agenda item does not represent every resident equally. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you so. So I have to respectfully disagree with you, Councilwoman McKean. It does represent everybody, because every single person here has someone in their family that is part of the LGBTQ community. And if you don't think you do, that just means that somebody doesn't feel comfortable enough to share that with us, and it should not be that way. I also want to just add that the fact that we have symbols that have a special meaning to certain segments of the community does not mean that other segments of the community are excluded. That is either-or thinking, or thinking about a pie that is limited in terms of, you know, what there is to have. That's not the situation here. There is enough room for everyone. We don't need to engage in either-or thinking. The pride flag does not mean that straight people are unwelcome, or, you know, we don't care about straight people or what have you. We can do both and, not either-or. Thanks.
So, you want to close?
Yeah, just, it's not about getting rid of the pride flag. I think we are so much bigger than that and mature, that I have a nephew and a niece that are both gay, and I love them dearly, but we, in my family, don't recognize them as any different. They are part of the family as equals, as I do recognize everybody in this community as equal valued members. I don't put a title on them except for "community member." I adore them, and I appreciate them, and I value them greatly, but I don't believe, I believe actually, that we are all equal, and we don't need titles or anything, and that our flags that we have that represent our governments are what is important, to unify us and get over this divisive titling and stuff, and we just stick with our beautiful American flag and everything else. And it has nothing to do with segregating or being anything else to another group. It has nothing to do with that. It's recognizing we are one.
Clerk, the item has been, it's been moved by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. McKean. Please call the roll.
Can I make one more comment? It's very, very quick, like a second.
Everybody had a turn, but...
I know. But I think it's important. I think it's very quick.
Very quick. Because I gave him the chance to close.
I appreciate that. It was mentioned a couple of times tonight that people either don't get it, or maybe somebody didn't do enough to have conversation, and I did mention the community cafes and dialogues. I do think that perhaps there is an opportunity here for our community to come together, regardless of the outcome of this decision, to have conversations, and maybe even a panel, and this is a later conversation, but where we can gather people to bring them together and maybe learn a little bit more, too. That's all.
Madam Clerk, it's been moved, it's been seconded. Please call the roll.
And just a reminder, it's amended by including the six branches of the armed forces, correct? All right. Councilmember Kelmick?
No.
Mosher?
No.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean? McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
No.
Burns.
Yes.
The item passes 4-3.
So we're on to the next item. Members, and now we're going to file item number 32. It's been submitted by Councilmember Mosher. Councilmember Mosher, would you like to introduce your item?
Sure. And we'll make this quick as well. You know, recently, actually in January, I don't think we ever voted on it, but it was announced that we were canceling remote participation via Zoom for council meetings and all public meetings. And it's unfortunate, one, that we didn't have an opportunity to weigh in on that and have a discussion in public, but that's fine. It was communicated to the public. But what I realized after that, though, is we really lost this opportunity that COVID provided. COVID was, is, the pandemic is terrible and provided very, very few positive outcomes. However, I do believe that the expansion of public participation through technology was one of those things that was a positive outcome. We presently have the tools and the technology available to us to provide resources for people to be able to give really active participation in their government, an active voice, where not only the people that are here in this room, but everyone can hear what they have to say. I think it is important to mention that we have really expanded the ability for people to hear the public meetings. So we do now have those meetings on Facebook, on Twitter, on YouTube, still on Channel 3, and also via the city's website. So I do want to also acknowledge the expansion through that means. But I think that along with that, you know, taking away the ability for someone to provide remote public comment, I think is really, just, it's wrong, because this is an opportunity for people that, as has been mentioned, who perhaps are older, maybe they don't drive at night. You know, I'm part of the Huntington Beach Council on Aging now, and a lot of the conversations there about events have been talking about how they need transportation at night, because or they don't want to have the events happen at night, because they won't be able to drive there. And I actually hadn't considered that before. So I really think that there are many people within our community who want to participate, who've been able to participate, and in effect, this has actually constrained their participation. It's taken it away. We should never be taking away the ability of people to actively and robustly participate in our government. And so I make a motion to move this item so that we can provide more public participation. Being able to do that helps us be able to make better decisions. We have more input from the public. We'll be able to do right by the public and represent them better.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been seconded. I will make a substitute motion that we go back to where it was pre-COVID. We're not taking away anybody's right to speak. The bottom line is, the previous council limited one minute. I've gone to three minutes to let people speak. There's other ways of communication. I got a plethora, obviously, we all did, hundreds of emails regarding this hearing. I went through those emails, and I'm sure all of you did as well. And, you know, so I make the substitute motion to go back to where it was pre-COVID, because I think it is important that people show up.
And just to expand on that, I just want to, you know, clarify some comments made earlier by some community members. There's still many avenues of live accessibility. The City Council and Planning Commission meetings remain viewable live and on demand through the following platforms: HB Channel 3, the city's website, Cablecast Screenwave application, available on Roku and Apple devices, the City of Huntington Beach YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter pages. Written communications sent before 2:00 p.m. will be delivered to the city council members before the meeting, and will be announced by the clerk during the city council meeting. All written communications submitted before or after 2:00 are part of the public record and can be viewed by anyone, along with the minutes of each city council meeting on the city's website. So in order to speak live publicly, individuals need to fill out a request to speak card in person and are allotted three minutes to speak during the public comment section of the meeting.
So do you second that substitute motion?
I do.
Mayor.
Yes.
So, actually, prior to COVID, I don't know if, I mean, it seems forever ago now in context, Zoom had like 12 employees when COVID started. Like, there was no technology that the city had implemented to do live interaction within a meeting. It would have been a conference call, effectively, like a conference bridge set up, and it would have been a real technological hurdle. The advances that Zoom had through this and Teams, and, you know, we're using Zoom, I think, as the Kleenex of teleconferencing pieces, really. Prior to 2020, I was actually working on a design for the ability for the city to be able to livestream its meetings. Its staff could check out a device they could take to the public meeting, because we had so many boards and commissions, as you guys know, 40-something odd boards and commissions, that nobody could attend, because they were at 2:00 on a Tuesday. And Zoom, having the Zoom capability, allowed folks to interact with their government in a better way. By eliminating this, and what we voted on was to eliminate the approval of the SB 361. I don't believe we actually, as part of that, eliminated Zoom, and that, I still don't quite sure how we got to eliminating the public meeting without that. But the previous council, it was the previous mayors that limited that. I objected to limiting the topic, the mayor gets to decide how long folks speak for, but I think that the precluding, because it was pre-COVID, I think, cutting off our nose despite our face, because it was pre-COVID, to not take advantage of technological leaps that we've had, I think is folly. I think having access to those boards and commission meetings are very important, especially for our seniors that can't get there. And I think being able to comment, it hasn't been abused. You know, I think we could set a threshold as part of the conversation, says, you know, if we start having, you know, 100 people call in over Zoom, we can readdress this conversation. But I think having, eliminating all streaming of our other meetings, because right now, I believe only under the old rules, the planning commission meeting and the city council meeting were streamed. Finance commission's not going to be available to folks. Southeast area, Mobile Home Advisory Board, I mean, those are just off the top of my head. Community services, big committees that have big input that people can find out about aren't going to be accessible, because either folks are working or have, you know, no ability to come down to City Hall, or transportation to get down to City Hall. So I think going back, just because it's quote-unquote "pre-COVID," and not taking advantage of the technological leaps that we've had and the infrastructure that's already been built, I think is, isn't a great public policy decision.
We could agree to disagree without being disagreeable. Tonight, we had 57 speakers. We have an active community. I'm the one that actually wanted everybody to get three minutes, when the previous one went down to one, I believe, one minute. And I just respectfully disagree. That's why I made the substitute motion, and it's been seconded.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I appreciate the fact that when people are here live, they get the full three minutes to be able to comment, but we've just traded the ability to comment remotely for the three minutes. And, you know, for seniors and people who have disabilities, it's unfortunate. It's a real loss. There's no compelling reason that's been offered for us not to do this. I could see if it was, if it required some significant financial investment or something like that, but we're talking about flipping a switch. So in the absence of some kind of compelling reason not to offer people this opportunity to comment, I just cannot support that, so, thank you.
Respect. Okay.
I have a question, just the three, what's, how many, what was the average of a senior person calling in or somebody like that on a typical council meeting?
Some of them are right here. They could probably answer to that.
Well, no, I'm asking you guys, and I figured you.
I don't have a number, but there was, sorry, that's enough. There was an average number of many people who were actually engaging with us, and I have heard from many people since then, who are immunocompromised, again, who can't drive here at night.
And candidly, I've heard from many people thanking me for going back to the pre-COVID, and because they do believe that people should come to the hearing to have the three minutes. So again, we could agree to disagree.
Sure, and this is my item, so if I could just have another moment. So I think that part of this challenge, and I heard this on the previous meeting where we talked about Main Street, it's all about this pre-COVID. So it's like, let's pretend the progress away, because it's related to COVID. I think that's absolutely ridiculous. We have this technology here. You four people repeatedly said you wanted to listen...
Councilmembers.
Yes, you are councilmembers, absolutely. But at the time, you weren't councilmembers. I'm not demeaning.
Hey. Let's go.
During your campaigns, when you were not councilmembers, you said that you wanted to listen to everyone. I heard that again and again, and I appreciate that, because I do, too. And I'm not trying to be demeaning with regards to that. I apologize, Councilmember Burns, for coming off that way. But we all are here to listen to everyone. When you say that you want to listen to people, we have a tool that allows us to be able to do that more effectively, but yet you are choosing to go back to pre-COVID, when that tool didn't really exist, and it does now, and it's already in place. You are choosing to exclude voices. You are choosing to take away access to government for people with disabilities, with seniors, families, those who are immunocompromised, and frankly, it's just wrong, and it's the opposite of what you campaigned on, which was listening to the people.
And I respectfully disagree. Clerk, call the roll. The substitute motion was made by me, seconded by Mr. McKeon. Call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
No.
Mosher.
No.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Bolton.
No.
Burns.
Aye.
Item passes 4-3.
Item passes 4-3. Members, we're on to item number 33. Councilwoman McKeon, would you like to introduce your item?
Sure. So this has to do with the group sober living homes, and we heard a lot of very heartbreaking stories on the campaign trail, so I feel this needs to be focused on, to ensure the patient's health and safety are protected, and that the neighboring residence's quality of life is prioritized. Like I said, the stories we heard on the campaign trail were extremely troubling, from patients being put on the curb as soon as their insurance runs out, to neighbors with tears in their eyes describing how their neighborhood was being terrorized by a poorly-run group sober living home. And this H item directs the city manager to work with the city attorney to look at possible new zoning text amendments to protect group home patients from being curbed when their insurance runs out, which can lead to the patient becoming homeless in some instances, as well as begin investigating complaints of insurance fraud. This item also focuses on the neighboring residents by creating quarterly status reports on list of current complaints regarding illicit group home operations harming the disabled, including group home locations, nature of complaints, description of complaints, complaints regarding public nuisance activities like loud noise or trash, whether issues are code enforcement, or whether there is criminal activity. Group home locations should identify state licensed facilities, sober homes, nonlicensed providers, et cetera, and what efforts have been done that quarter to address the complaints, a full status report. And then lastly, this item requests recommendations from code enforcement on what resources or assistance they need from city council to step up enforcement, reduce response times, effectively identify problem homes, effectively address the problems of the homes, et cetera.
I'd like to second that motion. Discussion, members?
I have some questions.
Good comment.
Councilmember McKeon, nine months seems arbitrary. Where does nine months come from?
I feel that's an appropriate amount of time to provide eviction notice to a patient in the home.
I mean, I just feel like...
Yeah, I guess if you want to like...
We're just, I mean, nine months, yeah, it seems, why not 12?
If you want to debate the time, I mean, the genesis of the idea is to prevent curbing, so as soon as this patient's insurance runs out, they're on the street. So by providing a lengthy time of eviction notice to the patient would limit said curbing events. So whether you want to go six months or nine months, I don't really think it matters. I don't think we should get wrapped around the axle on the...
No, I was just, I was just trying to understand, like, what, where that, I just, I see some potential edge cases there, so it's, this would just be for sober living homes, then?
Correct.
And underdefined, under, state licensed or not under six, so they're not licensed?
Right.
Oh, it's a question.
What was the question?
Sorry. State licensed or unlicensed facilities?
Well, no, I want to do a full report on everything, so, you know, how many are state licensed, how many are not?
So if you just have a home that's unlicensed with six folks, and they want to get rid of somebody, they're going to require nine months to evict them?
Okay, so your question's on the nine months. Obviously, nine months should go to state licensed facilities. I'm saying this agenda item focuses on a full report on unlicensed facilities as well, because I would, you know...
How, I mean, we don't necessarily know about the, I mean, so unlicensed facilities are six folks and fewer. They don't require a state license, and so, I mean, this is, like, yeah, so I'm just trying, again, I'm trying to hit the edge cases as we start to move through this, to have staff make sure we're tight on the item here. It sounds like the city attorney wants to say something.
Yeah. So there are different, and I know Ursula is here as well to help out with this. Obviously, there are different types of homes, most of which, that are contemplated by this, provide some sort of treatment. Some are state licensed, some are not. Some have six members or fewer, some have more. I think the way I read this is it, it's an attempt to apply to all of them. We'd have to see what these regulations would do to the state licensed facility, if they're even applicable to state license. They may not be at all. They may be, but they may not be. But we can drill down on that between now and when we come back with a proposal.
Yeah, for sure. Again, I mean, I know that we've said this now for the third council meeting in a row, but these, and I appreciate your questions, of course, but these H items are ideas, so that's the genesis of the H item, is to come back with what's appropriate, what's not, what can we do. But to your point, the goal is to limit curbing, and so the nine-month number should apply where appropriate to sober living homes.
Okay. And then for Ursula, I have not gotten, maybe in the last year, I've gotten one email about a sober living home. Seemingly, either folks have stopped complaining, or they're just not complaining to city council anymore. Is sober living homes really take, are they taking up quite a bit of code enforcement time at this point?
It kind of comes and goes in waves. I would say that in November of 2021, we started receiving kind of an uptick after not having received complaints for a while, and we have certainly received some complaints in 2022. I would have to verify with code enforcement in terms of the sort of percentage of those types of complaints versus the overall caseload. I'm not prepared to...
I just, it was more the vibe, not the statistics. And then with regard to investigating insurance fraud, is that our job? I feel like that's the insurance commissioner, DOJ, at the state level type of thing.
So to answer your question on that, I've been in regular communication with the district attorney for years about what we can do better in Huntington Beach to fight crime, address some fraud, and this actually specifically is one of the things that the district attorney's office would appreciate some assistance on, that if, if nothing else, we could help investigate with PD and code enforcement, maybe gather as much information as possible on a problem home, if there's evidence or indication of insurance fraud, and then work with the district attorney. So ultimately, there, it would be their exclusive purview to prosecute those types of things. But they've, whether it's Tony Rukakis or Todd Spitzer, expressed an interest in collaboration on trying to pursue these problem homes in that regard.
Does this get us anywhere afoul of the kind of the issues that we've run into prior with regulation of sober living homes? Because when I saw sober living home, group home things start to pop up, I get very nervous, because that sounds like rife to get sued by somebody. Is there anything in this item, in the recommendations, that if, I mean, again, some of this is coming back, so at least there's some time to noodle on it, but I just get very worried when we start talking about changing our, the existing stuff.
Disabled or not, state licensed or not, nobody's ever entitled to do anything that's illegal, right? So we have broad discretion to pursue anything that we suspect rises to the level of illegal activity, whether it's to investigate, prosecute. So the only issue in my mind would be state licensed facilities, you know, how much jurisdiction do we have to investigate, things like that. But that, again, this is first time seeing this, I'd have to, I guess, digest it and, you know, come back after we drill down on it with a proposal. And probably involve additional conversations with the district attorney as well.
Okay. I mean, this all seems like recommendations and come back with stuff, so I didn't see...
Yeah, for sure. And I, like I said, I appreciate the questions. I mean, most H items are ideas of, like, concepts we want to focus on, and then the details come back to us later that we can all look at, analyze, and then vote on. So this is, from my experience, being on the campaign trail for two elections in a row and in the community, this was a huge deal to residents, and needs to be focused on, it needs to be prioritized, and it does contribute to our homelessness problem, so it's just a big issue, it needs to be focused on, and I think this is a good general outline of ways we can approach it and allow, you know, staff and the attorney to come back, and we can review the details then.
The process will help tighten it up. So with that, it's been moved, it's been seconded. Please, Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Aye.
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, we're now on item number 34. Councilman McKean, would you like to introduce your item?
Yep, last one. So the city continues to experience private development of remaining vacant parcels and ongoing redevelopment of existing homes and businesses, some of which are, as we know, mandated by the state. And this continuous development and redevelopment results in increased demand and impacts to the city's levels of service, LOS, that must be addressed and accommodated by the city's infrastructure and staff. Currently, developers are required to pay certain city development impact fees, DIPS for short, when proceeding with a development project in the city. DIPS, also known as mitigation fees or impact fees, can be charged by cities to developers to defray all or portion of the cost and impact to LOS on public facilities related to development of a project. And these impact fees generally support a wide range of community benefits like public safety, infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, environmental mitigation, libraries and parks. And essentially, DIPS act as a return to the city for impacts and costs sustained by the city because of proposed development. The last comprehensive development impact fee and NEXUS report was done in 2011. As such, the city should contract with a firm to review the 2011 report in order to determine if the city's DIPS sufficiently cover its LOS and recommend any appropriate changes or modifications. Much like my initiative brought in January of '23, where council was asked to direct the city manager to have the city's building standards reviewed. Because of high demands from the state recently to increase housing, this review will shed light on costs to the city's LOS of development since 2011. I think we all know that costs have exploded along with inflation, so I think it's appropriate that we relook at this, you know, being 12 years later. So my recommended action is direct the city manager to work with the finance and community development department to conduct a request for proposals and qualifications process to hire a firm that will commence a DIPS study and NEXUS report or other appropriate calculations.
Second that motion. Questions from members? Mr. Kelmick?
Mr. Councilmember McKean, are you familiar with AB 602?
No.
So AB 602 was passed in the 2021 session, went into effect January 1st of 2022, and it actually involves DIPS and NEXUS studies. And it, we, ironically, we're the city that opposed it in the staff report, that we took in a position that it eliminates local control by going into effect. By doing a DIPS study, we actually are going to accelerate the impacts of this. So the impacts of this effectively say that the state, or the cities now have to use the state's new standard when calculating basically by per square footage, as opposed to just coming up with a NEXUS and saying, this school needs to pay us this because we've got these impacts. And like, it was very much supported by the development community because it will likely substantially lower our ability to raise fees, or to collect fees on that NEXUS. We don't actually, it starts in January 1st of 2022, and cities have eight years to complete a NEXUS study, so we wouldn't need to update it until 2030. Now, I don't disagree that, that we should, we want to be able to, I'm 100% cost recovery, right? I don't think we should be subsidizing folks. But I think under, with AB 602 law, as being state law right now, I think this is, has some major side effects that could lower our fees as an unintended consequence. I would, while I like, again, like, I support making sure that we have up-to-date studies, and obviously, costs for construction have gone way up, and our needs have gone, gone up, I would say, on, you know, parks and, you know, the schools set their own, their own fees, but potentially, and again, the study's likely going to take six to eight months to complete. It's going to cost us anywhere between $75,000 and $100,000 likely. This may be, I think, geared more towards the budget cycle, but I think, you know, I'd be willing to support that this is a, something we want to take a look at in the future, but I think going out to do an RFP at this point without understanding, you know, kind of a back of the envelope, what we expose ourselves to by doing a full DIPS study, and if there's a way around, like, maybe we target some things that don't trigger AB 602, because I don't know enough about it. I just, as I was doing some research, it popped up as a, hey, this is a new law you want to be aware of.
Yeah, no, and I do know what you're speaking about now, because we did, I did talk with the attorney's office about it. They're aware, obviously, of that issue. All your concerns should be taken into account, of course. I don't think this precludes us from moving this process forward to at least get the proposal working right, to get a request for proposal and qualifications, and work with the city attorney's office to make sure that we're protected and address some of your concerns. So I don't think by moving this item forward, that prevents any of those things from happening.
Yeah, I guess not. I mean, it'll come back, so, I mean, again, like, we want to look at it, but yeah, again, like, I'm hesitant to kick off a DIPS study if, you know, we don't know how much effectively, you know, less-
If this moves, it goes to the city attorney's office, and the city attorney needs to look at the impacts of AB 602 as related to this item.
And we'll work with the city manager's office, and he'll obviously identify consultants, and it would, there would be a proposal, so it's a slow, multi-step process to get it off the ground, anyway.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Clerk, it's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
The item passes 7-0.
Okay, members, that concludes our items. I would like to-
I'm making moves.
Hold on, hold on. Before we do that, I would like for us all to take a moment and, and to adjourn. I know we did a moment of silence earlier, but I would like to adjourn in memory of Ally West, a freshman at Huntington Beach High School that tragically passed away last week, and I think it's appropriate for us as a city, as a city council, to adjourn in her memory. So with that, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We're adjourned. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Financing Authority is Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening.